Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Wednesday, November 15th, 2017 meeting to order of the Longmeadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, correspondence. Melanie?
Okay. So we have an emailed letter dated October 31st, 2017 from Donald Jarvis at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the student of the month for October 2017. Longmeadow student honored is Joseph McDonald, Building and Property Management, and Kevin Gonzalez, Integrated Occupational Prep.
Thank you, Melanie. And next we'll move on to the approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the October 25th, 2017 school committee meeting as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Move on. Are there any visitor comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee announcement and recognition. Beth?
I know we have a packed agenda today, but I just cannot not say something about the phenomenal night that Longmeadow High School sports had last night. I can't let it not go recognized. I love, first of all, that we're recognizing Joe McDonald and Kevin Gonzalez at C-Tech. I think those achievements are equally important, and I love that we recognize that. But our sports program, amazing. I couldn't be more excited. I don't even have a child on either team. But I will say, watching six or seven Western Mass teams get eliminated last night from any kind of state championship contention, and then watching not just one, but two Longmeadow teams advance to a state championship berth is amazing. One is special enough, I think.
Yeah.
Two, I think, is amazing. So our boys varsity soccer team killed it in sudden death PKs. Amazing group of guys. And our girls field hockey team, hard fought battle against Algonquin, 3-2 win, and they both advanced to a state final game on Saturday in Worcester. So I would say to the coaches, the parents, and the fans who've supported these kids, well done. And to our student athletes competing on Saturday, best of luck to you guys. I'll be there cheering you on. I would encourage anyone to go, Worcester. Saturday, the 18th, I think it is. But really phenomenal job.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have any business with guests, so we can move on to the administration report. Marty?
Sure. Written report in your packet, few items maybe of interest. Hoping at your November 29th meeting to introduce to you Mr. Paul McNeil. Paul was hired as the Director of the Drug-Free Community Grant, and the Coalition, the Closed Community Coalition, had an opportunity to meet Paul Monday night. He was well received, and he's got a lot of experience in Coalition building, and he has a lot of direct experience with that federal grant that we were lucky enough to get to receive. And so I'm hoping to bring him to your meeting on the 29th. And then also, as you are aware, as communities aware, Dr. Neil Guile will be returning to Longmeadow. We're really pleased to have him back soon as the Principal of Williams Middle School. He will start officially on December 18th, but he's already been engaged in some transitional activities. So we're really happy to have Neil back. I had a chance yesterday to travel around the district with Sandy Boudreaux. We did a technology tour, took in classrooms from kindergarten right up through AP Physics class here at the high school, just to see how we're using technology and how the new Chromebooks are being deployed and how existing technologies are being used to support student learning. So to see in one day a kindergarten class working on letter recognition all the way up to an AP Physics class working on I'm-not-sure-what was really cool.
Nice second thought.
Yeah. I know it was impressive, but I couldn't describe it to you. School improvement plans are principals with their school councils are finalizing the school improvement plans. The plan is to present those to you on November 29th. So if you have any feedback on that presentation, we'll be pulling that together soon. We hope to do it in a way that shows the alignment of school improvement goals with district goals, with school committee goals, which hopefully will be finalized today. And so I think, I hope you'll see a lot of evidence of collaboration and communication and alignment across all our schools. Veterans Day, really proud of the way we recognize and celebrated Veterans Day in our schools. Too many examples to note, but assemblies, classroom activities, school discussions, really impressive display. I want to thank Sue and our administrators and dozens of teachers for leading a series of professional development activities. On November 9th, we had a great day, dozens and dozens of activities. I gave you a sample, sampling in my report, but safe to say that it really assisted us in terms of making sure that our work is aligned and coordinated across all grade levels. And if you have any questions on that, let me know, but it was a productive day, I would say. And then to echo Beth's comments, it's been a great fall. We're hoping to secure a couple of state titles this weekend. And, you know, in addition to our students performing well at Career Tech and on the athletic field, we have our, our fall concerts are coming up, and the senior class play is this weekend as well. They're doing Shrek the Musical. So it's all student-run, student-directed, student-choreographed. We're looking forward to that as well. And inadvertently, I included my previous report to you, so you can sort of ignore the second page of my report. It was at the bottom.
We have enough material to review for this packet.
It was at the bottom of the document, so. So that's, that's the lineup, and if you have any questions, I'm open.
I didn't really have a question, just a comment, because I was attending the Williams PAC meeting yesterday. And just to tie in with the technology integration tour, the middle schools are pretty excited about the Hour of Coding on December, I think it's December 4th.
Fourth, yes.
Which I love to see that those types of activities are integrated, not just through the high school, but down through middle and elementary. And they're pretty excited about that. I think they've exceeded their goal of selling T-shirts to sponsor the event, or they're trying to get Larry Birdie to wear a T-shirt that day. So they're pretty, pretty engaged with that, and it was nice to see.
Yeah, so that's definitely worth mentioning. I appreciate that. So computer science, digital literacy standards are getting more and more attention across the state. I think the expectation that we provide opportunities for our students to learn computer science skills, programming skills, digital literacy skills is increasing. And so credit to the middle schools for embracing code.org as an approach to address those standards. Senator Lesser will join us on the 4th for the kickoff of that Hour of Code celebration. So I think I had sent the school committee some information on that, so if any of you would like to attend, you're more than welcome. So, thanks, Beth.
Stephanie? I could also add that I was able to attend the professional development presentation that was given on drug use among students in concealment as part of the closed coalition that I'm on. So it was a great opportunity to be able to sit there and watch that presentation, which was really good.
So I will move on to my chair report. I just had two quick things. The joint administration meetings that we had talked about at our last meeting, we had determined as a school committee that what the best thing, what we should request, or what we wanted to request, was to have those meetings posted, so there were minutes and all of us could be, you know, fully informed and have opportunity to attend the meetings if we wanted to, but not participate. And the select board has offered a compromise to that, where we don't post the meeting, but we take notes. And I wanted to see, you know, how the committee felt about that. So it would be, you know, not a posted meeting for the public to attend. We would take minutes and then, you know, make sure that you had access to those. I am not sure, and maybe Russ, you can tell me, if members wanted to attend those meetings but not participate, and we did have a quorum, would that be outside of our open meeting law?
We should ask our attorney, but if we're just watching, you know, and participating, but it couldn't be the finance sub this way. It would have to be just you.
Yes, I would be just the one participating. So, you know, I just, I wanted to kind of gather input from you guys, since this was a change to what we had.
So just to summarize, so you would attend the meeting. We are welcome to attend but not deliberate? And there will also be minutes available to us, and/or?
Under this compromise, there would be minutes regardless. So whatever happens at the meeting, you know, we'll come up with a document of minutes from that meeting. But the piece that, you know, they'd like to change was posting the meeting for the public to attend as well.
So the public could be there. I think we want to go back to our council to talk to them about that, because if the public can't be there, but the committee members were showing up to watch, that's something I've never seen before. So I'm not sure what the AG's office would say about that, because normally with an open meeting, you can sit in the audience, the committee can be there as well, or subcommittee meetings, you could do that. But this would be a closed meeting. If we ever had a quorum of a school committee sitting there for it, it might be a problem. So let's just check it. But I don't think we'd ever show, you know, a quorum of the committee probably would never show up for that, anyway.
I guess before I go to your question, I did want to ask, maybe by a show of hands, who would be interested in being at any of these meetings if we were able to have access to them? Just so I know who, you know, if no one here is interested in attending them, then that certainly changes the situation, anyway. So.
I wouldn't close the door.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, just as time plays, circumstances, topic.
So then it is a, okay. Stephanie?
I think if you're not going to post it, but you're going to allow the public to be there.
Not the public, just the committee?
Okay.
Committee members from both sides, if they wanted to attend but not.
That's what I was saying is weird about the proposal.
Because then it's not, because we would be acting essentially as the public if it's not a posted meeting. So then you're allowing some of the public in, but not all of the public, and I think that's when you get into a.
Okay. I'll continue to hash this out for us.
It would be clear that you could go yourself, and if we did not attend, that would be fine legally.
Right.
I'm just not sure with this hybrid approach, what the Attorney General would say.
Okay. Second thing I wanted to do is just check in with you. We had agreed, I think over the summer, to check in on some of the positions that, you know, we're, we contract ourselves. So Sue and Tom and Marty, and I just wanted to let you know, I'm aware that we're behind schedule. We were going to do it, like, do three check-ins, let's say, throughout the school year, or two. We're behind schedule, but my hope is that after we get through the following meeting, 11:29, I can move on to that. And then I just wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work you've been doing behind the scenes at home in preparation for the meetings. So thank you so much. I actually have Reggie's report. He was not able to attend, but he sent me an email with some updates. They've made multiple announcements about their email, but still haven't gotten any responses, so they're looking into posting it on one of the social media, school social media accounts, like we had suggested. We also emailed Mr. Birdie and Mrs. Allen to see if any of the middle school student government representatives would want to come to the school committee meetings with their full group when they come. This was done once last year, but then it wasn't continued. So he's going to look into that as well. And then finally, the senior class play is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and all of those shows are at 7 o'clock PM. Move on to the subcommittee reports. Finance sub.
So you have in your packet a Metco, I guess it's a route map. The first one is our current route map, so it's agenda item number nine. And the next page is the current high school route. And these all list, you know, the first pickup and the last drop-off as well. And then we have, number three is a K-12 route option, which I'm going to have Tom explain. Maybe we should just have you explain the difference. I'm not going to.
So there are six maps included in your packet. First, as Russ indicated, reflect. Map number one, our combined elementary/middle school route, which is our current operation, and then a high school route, which is how we currently transport our Metco students. Map number three and four would be a, so what we try to do is come up with some suggestions to address the current length of the elementary/middle school route, which is approximately two hours. So we try to come up with some no-cost options. So maps three and four would be taking all K-12 Metco students and breaking them into two routes. So we would use the two buses, and they would pick up kindergarten through 12th grade students, and they would drop off at the high school, and then we would have to figure out some way for individual students in middle and elementary in a before-school program. Same challenge would be for both buses, but it would possibly reduce some of the time on the bus, but not necessarily the pickup times. Because the high school students would still need to be here for 6:45, we would have to probably look at those routes starting around 6:30, which is about the first pickup time for the elementary/middle school route currently. And so, and then on options five and six, it is proposing taking the high school Metco bus that we use now and sending it back out to pick up some of the elementary/middle school students. So basically splitting the elementary/middle school route for the AM only. Based on the dismissal times, we could not implement the same concept for the afternoon, because the bus won't make it back here in time for the elementary/middle school dismissals. So it's utilizing the current fleet, the two buses that we have for Metco students, and trying to reduce the time on the bus. Like I said, the first proposal, or maps three and four, reduces the time on the bus, doesn't necessarily give them later pickup times. Maps five and six, it reduces the time in the morning, both on the bus and what time they would get picked up, but it doesn't address the afternoon. Having had a number of conversations, there may be some people who aren't happy with the change, who students are getting picked up early now, and now would create potential daycare issues if we move it from the early time to a much later time. Some of, some of the students potentially could go from getting picked up before 7:00 to being picked up closer to 8:00. So if parents work, and right now they don't have an issue with daycare, then most certainly could create a different challenge. So those were no-cost options that we tried to come up with. Both will have some disruption to students that currently have times that are established, but, you know, we heard, we heard that there were some concerns about the length of the elementary/middle school route.
Tom, just so I under, sorry. Okay. Just so I'm clear, this last page that you have is a proposal for split for elementary and middle, right? And then?
Maps five and six?
Yeah.
Would be for elementary and middle. So the high school wouldn't get affected.
The high school would be, the high school?
Map number two would stay the same.
So there's no new proposal for the high school? That would remain?
Yeah, because the high school route?
That would remain?
Yeah, it's not necessarily the one impacted currently. Their route's not experiencing.
So in terms of time, in terms of civilized pickup times and reducing time on the bus, maps number two, five, and, two, five, and six are the ideal for those two goals?
For the AM.
For the AM?
Yes. It's not going to change middle and elementary PM dismissal or drop-off.
Well, map two is just a current.
It's current.
It's high school, so it's not changing, I guess, is what Jess is telling me.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
With proposal using map five and six, map two would not be affected at all. I do have to say, when there are times when we have snow, most certainly can delay the process, which can add time to the routes, just because everybody's going slower, getting through Springfield at rush hour if there's snow on the ground. So then utilizing that high school bus to go back out, if it's already running late, is then going to create an issue of meeting the times that are posted for elementary and middle school. So it just, you know, we most certainly can create that, where students are getting picked up later than posted and getting to school later.
Sorry. Sorry.
Tom, when you said that you've had some responses from parents of Metco students, have you showed them possibilities, or that's just feedback you've heard from a few parents?
It was from the beginning of the year, when a specific individual was looking for an early pickup time.
Got it.
To accommodate a work schedule. So this particular proposal would put this individual at a much later time than what they currently are getting picked up at.
There was one.
One. So we have not publicly put the potential proposals out there to the parents.
So this has just been an internal discussion as of right now?
An internal discussion. We presented it to Finance Sub last week, and then they proposed bringing it here. I believe the recommendation was in support of maps five and six also.
Oh, okay. That was your recommendation. That's what I was going to.
I don't know if we actually voted to recommend, but that was what we were leaning towards.
I agree. I think it was consensus.
Versus the other one, the, putting K-12 on the same bus, we didn't like that. Three and four.
Okay.
Stephanie?
Five and six make sense, but what do we do about the afternoon?
Currently, they're on the bus for three hours, three hours, two hours.
I just, I personally feel that we absolutely cannot have kindergarteners on a bus for two hours.
It's horrible.
So I, you know, this makes sense for morning drop-off, but we still need to do something about afternoon. And then I think the point that this is going to impact these families needs to be addressed, because it does impact childcare, it does impact their entire routine and how parents get to work and, and what happens. So it can't, the change can't happen in isolation of these parents. I think it needs to be a collaborative effort, but at the end of the day, I cannot, I cannot have children, no matter what, on a bus for two hours. Kindergarteners, no bathroom. I mean, I don't, I don't think I need to make that point. So the question is, how do you fix that afternoon? And I think that's what we're, we're faced with.
Russ?
So it seems like, from what we discussed, the only way to actually totally fix that would be add at least two more buses. The problem with that is, you can't really do it in isolation, because you'd have to look at, well, if we do that, you know, we, we definitely have an athletic budget issue that we've been trying to deal with. The town wants us to, you know, either remain flat with our budget or cut our budget every year. So it's just one of those things that I think you'd have to look at that, at the same time you're looking at everything else in the budget. Because if you just do it now, if we add two buses, each bus is about 50 grand apiece, roughly.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight apiece. And I think the other thing is, do we have parents that are, I agree completely that two hours is a very long time, but I'm not sure we have any parents necessarily complaining about it. And some seem to prefer it. So it's one of those things where I think we'd want to know more about, from the parents about what they think about it before, before we looked at potentially spending a bunch of money to fix the problem.
Stephanie?
I see this as a problem that happened, that we should have somehow, through some means, had a heads-up that these kids were going to need to be on a bus for two hours. Whether a parent is okay with their five-year-old being on a bus for two hours, doesn't matter. We have a line. You cannot keep a five-year-old on a bus for two hours, in four hours a day. So in terms of collaborating and working with these parents, I think it's very important, because it's going to impact their schedules. Whether I want to be on a committee that has set this up for elementary kids to be on a bus for four hours a day, I don't, and I won't. So I see this as a problem that needs to be fixed. I see that we have other issues with athletics, but I think when it comes down to it, if the public were to know that we are busing children in for Metco for this program and keeping them on a bus for four hours a day?
Russ?
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with that perspective, but I'd say there's regions all over the state to do that. So it's not like we're the only ones doing it. And the other, and the, somebody that lives in a region like that is making a choice to send their kids, you know, live in a regional school district where you send your kids on a bus for two hours. The Metco parents are also doing the same thing. I mean, unfortunately, it's a program we set up, and the way it's set up, it's the furthest point across Springfield is the, the main area that we bring kids in from. That's technically the zip code we're supposed to be taking from. So the program itself is set up where it's going to be difficult to ever get those kids here in less than over an hour, no matter what we do.
So I'm going to take, you know, two people that haven't spoken yet, and then I think maybe we'll just table some of this, because if this was a first, you know, first stab at it, we talked about it at Finance Up, we can kick it back to Finance Up. But Karen?
So just to throw this out there, is there a possibility of, of, I know you said the timing doesn't work as far as splitting up the high school and the elementary and middle schools. Is there some sort of program where we can house the kids in, you know, like an educational program after school, send one bus, bus out, bring the bus back, and then bring them out? Because it seems like that would cut down on the time, but it would also not have the little ones stuck on the bus, but rather engaged in an educational way. Is that a possibility?
I had talked to Tom about Greenwood, and can we, you know, I mean, I think there's ways that we need to be creative.
Right.
And if parents need the bus for childcare, are we going to stand behind that and say, that's okay, we're saving money, we'll keep them on the bus for four hours? Or can we work with Greenwood, figure out some, something?
So Jess, and then I'll comment on.
And I, and I don't, I want to continue Karen's, Karen's proposal, because I think it's a great one. I was thinking the same exact thing, but I do want to express my support for Stephanie's comments. I agree with everything that you're saying, wholeheartedly, and I don't feel that because other districts might be doing it, that that makes it okay. It definitely doesn't justify it. I ethically feel that it's our responsibility to find some kind of solution, and I don't think we should wait for the budget to do it, so, thank you.
Okay. So we did talk about that possibility, too, at Finance Up, and we can do some more, you know, digging in at the subcommittee level. We, you know, do, do want to put these maps out there for your, you know, thoughts and that sort of thing, and continue to give suggestions to Tom, and we'll try to hash it out more and come up with, you know, some more solutions. But as, as a whole, we were happy with the five and six alternatives, because that at least solved part of the problem. And, you know, Finance Sub Committee did say $100,000 is, is a lot, so let's see if we can come up with some other solutions and make some other things work, rather than, you know, making cuts to the, you know, budget in order to, to just add the two buses. So we're going to continue to troubleshoot, and I think just so that we can stay on time with the agenda, Jess.
And if I may just thank Tom for, I think, Tom, you've been the one who's looking at this, right? And I think this AM is phenomenal. Really appreciate all the work that you put into this. I know it takes a lot of work, and it's kind of grueling, detailed work, so thank you. This is, this is a great, great proposal.
Let's move on to Policy Sub. Karen?
Policy.
Oh, Policy. Who's giving, sorry, Stephanie.
So we have three policies for first reading. IJNDC, IJND, and IJNDB. And let me just pull it up for a second. No, I can't. So this is for first reading. If there's any questions about changes, you can direct them to me, I guess, as the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee. I'm trying to see if they're actually noted on there, if the changes are not. So if you have any questions, these policies were worked on over a great length of time, so.
And they're, and they're just posted for 30 days on the website, so we'll have another meeting to discuss anything if you haven't looked at it yet. meeting to discuss anything if you haven't looked at it yet. Or have any questions for Policy sub committee at our following meeting, we can do that. Jess?
Thank you for all your hard work, Stephanie, on these policies, and...
Well, I'm one of the committee.
Karen and Melanie, right? And Marty and Tom also, thank you. I know you guys had a long meeting. I just wanted to ask, from a procedural standpoint, Michelle, be very brief, if, is it, is it possible just to, for us to get the old copy and the new copy for every, every policy?
All of our minutes, and I don't know if you, all of our minutes for each meeting show the track changes that we made. So what you could do is look, what we could do is send the minutes from each one, and you'll see the change.
Well, and they're posted, correct? Or are you posting your minutes as they finish?
The minutes are on our file, is that open to?
Yep, they're on the website.
It's on the website, okay.
But could we just provide the, the old policy and the new?
Oh, like the, the original?
Yeah, because for someone like me who reads more on paper than on computer, it's just so much easier for me to just look and compare and under, to understand the differences.
Yeah, they're online.
They're online, yeah.
Yeah, and rather than printing for the whole committee, if you want those printed like Jess, why don't you let Diane know that you want those, just because I, I can, you know, just so we're not taking the, making even more paper than we need.
Well, they, yeah.
Russ?
Well, what we used to do is just get a track changes version, instead of getting...
Oh, yeah.
Then we just need...
That makes more sense.
It is, but when these policies in particular are done, there are so many changes, it goes, it is a, you'll see in the minutes, how it's, how it's done.
But can we get that? Still, it would be really helpful.
They're in the minutes, I don't know how you want to...
You're asking to have that in a packet?
Just have them in a packet.
Instead of a clean copy?
Is that all right?
Yeah, I think we can...
For each one, or the latest?
Yeah, just the latest.
No, just the latest and the greatest, not the...
But then you won't see...
We could, we could create a PDF of the document, the track changes, and scan it and send it off to the committee.
Through all of the change, all of the changes through?
Original to final.
Okay.
Right, instead of all the versions, I think that would be easier, right?
That's also...
Well, because we have met three or four times, so you would see, you would see three or four...
The evolution, but...
We've been working on them in aggregate.
Okay.
Just give me the bottom line. So you just, do you just want the original in the end?
Yeah.
But without the, or with the track?
With the track, so Diane and I can connect on that.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Does that sound good?
Yes, that would help all...
Not a progression of all the changes, but just the track?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good, perfect. Any other questions on Policy sub?
Thanks, Russ.
And now we will move on to Operations sub.
Can I get back up on this, will this count as the first reading then?
Yes.
Or do you, or, this, this, okay, just for procedurally.
Karen?
So we met, Operations Subcommittee met on November 7th, and we discussed the long-range plan, we conferenced in, Stephen Crane, to figure out a little bit more as to what we were looking at. And he made it seem like it was more directional and informational, that this is really the current phase, which is just fact-finding mission, so he described it as slow and methodical. So we are going to wrap that up at our next meeting, which is scheduled for November 27th at 11:00. And hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have the long-range plan for the full school community to look at. We talked a little bit about the creation of a Facebook page, and how to make it compliant with open meeting laws, which we learned a little bit about at the conference that we went to. Jess is gonna talk to Nick George, Melanie's gonna look at the Select Board, I'm gonna look at other districts, see what they're doing. And we have further discussion about how we can communicate with the community a little bit better. We talked a little bit about high school start times. Marty provided us with something that's going on in the Middlesex League, they're changing, they're committing to changing their high school start times as kind of an athletic division. So, so we talked a little bit about that, we're still monitoring, we're gonna look at talking to some of the surrounding towns to see if it's been brought up to their school committees, and possibly get somebody in to talk to us a little bit about how they changed their start times. So that's pretty much, and then we have our next meeting on November 27th.
Okay, great. So maybe if you're gonna have a final draft of the long-range plan done after that meeting, just all of us be aware that it might not be in the packet right away, but it'll be added to the packet, and I will put it on the agenda for the 29th meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other reports from LPVEC, or any other questions for Operations Subcommittee before we move on? Okay, other reports, LPVEC or SEAL?
LPVEC, we meet tonight for an audit, so both of us will be there. SEAL met yesterday, last night, and really is continuing on with the Park and Rec, and working with Park and Rec to make the programs more inclusive. Park and Rec is gonna be partnering with Springfield College, which is amazing, and they're looking to start in the spring by providing kind of a workshop at Greenwood. Catherine Beavis over at the preschool is also gonna be speaking at Greenwood to the summer staff, often the kids, once they hire the summer staff, to, talking about inclusion and needs of kids and different things like that. So, those are the highway.
I do have a question, have you ever worked at all with the JCC's Calila program?
No, it's been talked about, they definitely have some good programming over there, for sure.
And I think they're looking to reach out and kind of, you know, unite somehow with us, and I suggested to you at one point to somebody, because they're looking to grow, you know, opportunities for the community, basically.
Excellent, I'll pass that along.
Ongoing business, we'll move to School Committee Goals. As you're aware, we have two different submissions, Jess provided us with a letter and a clean copy of some proposed committee goals. And along with that, we also have the original goals with the actionable items that we had asked Beth and Sue to work on for us. So with that, I will open up discussion just on basically what we want to do from here with regard to our goals and additions to them or changes to them. So I will open up the discussion.
I can say that I liked Marty's, and then I read Jess's, and I liked Jess's, so...
So we're talking about the School Committee Goals?
Oh, the School Committee Goals, not, not Marty's.
Correct, he's, he's the next one.
Okay, sorry.
I don't know where he falls, but...
I will say that as we received in our packet, the revised one from Jess, I like. I know, I mean, there's, it's, it's, it's an entirely different document, so I'd be interested to hear what people... I think overarching, it incorporates the same things that we've said, so.
Yeah, I, I, a lot of thought and time obviously went into that, and I thank you for that. And I did kind of cross-reference, and I went through to make sure that everything that we had on our original goal was pretty much included. I mean, I had a question mark on maybe one, you know, one or two things. So I think it was a good way to, to pull it in and not exclude things that we had originally developed. I do like the idea of some consistent format that can be used from year to year, and I don't, I don't know, like technically, if we should have eight goals or if we should have three. It's, Karen and I did attend at the conference a few weeks ago, some seminars on writing goals, and they, they seem to have two or three, but I'm not saying that, you know, we have to. I kind of like the idea of touching every, every subject from curriculum to, you know, everything she had lined out, and then being able from year to year, look at it, reevaluate it, you know, obviously some will take more of a stronghold than others, I don't know if you should have them as goals if you don't intend to get to them or don't think that you can. But I like the idea of consistently from year to year, because that's, as you guys know, how I, how I am, with just, you know, organization and continuity of care, so to speak. I like the idea of having those topics and being able to look at them each year, evaluate, make changes, see what we did and what we didn't do. You know, if, if we decided to go with hers, I, you know, I definitely had a few comments or things, you know, to maybe add, which would mean we wouldn't, probably wouldn't wrap it up tonight. Some of it's just logistics, and some of it is just an additional topic. For example, and I'll make this very brief, if you look at, like, goal number nine, high school start time, I'm wondering if we don't move that up into Operations, since it is Operations, and just make it another bullet point.
Good idea.
And then, the only thing I really didn't see, although she covered just about everything, was addressing the opioid crisis, and I think that's such a hot topic issue right now for all school districts, where we might be able to put that in under goal number four, as well as some continued health education, you know, health classes or curriculum moving into the elementary. So just a couple of tweaks, but I think overall, it did encompass, in terms of our original document, I didn't see so, and maybe I missed it, about some of the targeted, do I have to put my glasses on here? Well, I don't think it's anything that's specific, I think we got the gist of it. So that's kind of my two cents.
Is anybody, I will come back to you, but does anybody else want to speak before we...
So I'm, I think we're at the crossover in what I'm thinking of, and maybe those of you who went to the conference, I think it might have been covered. If we, so Marty's goal and the School Committee Goals, I think should be aligned. So if we change the School Committee Goals, sort of changing, I think, have to change Marty's goals in a way, because we have to work together, so that's kind of where I'm, I guess we can, I don't know if we talk about that separately or together, but for us to have different goals than him, I just, I want to make sure that they align, so that we're all working towards the same thing. And they are overarching the same thing, but we have, Jess is really pinpoint certain things, so, I don't know.
So at that conference, what they essentially said is they should align with the superintendent's goals, and then those should, all of the goals should align with the district plan. They also said you should have somewhere between two and four goals. So I think your goals are really well-written. I'm just not sure right now how well we can do that in this meeting, switch to those goals that are really not aligned completely with Marty's. I think some of them are, actually. So I'm just not sure, I'm totally comfortable kind of moving completely away from the other goals, even though I think your goals might be better written, only because the other goals were kind of done over time by the committee. And, and I do think we'd have to narrow the goals too, because nine goals would be a lot, although I think some of them are pretty easily achievable, but, so I'm not sure.
I, I included everything that everyone had submitted, and I just wanted to say that if there was anything that was missing, it was oversight, it wasn't intentional, so... My goal was just to, you know, just to include everybody's, which is what we've kind of done as a committee over the years, is included everyone's, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, Karen and I may be able to, you know, in terms of like next year, because I trusted him now on the head, we kind of, you know, maybe starting a little earlier next year on goals, and starting with, you almost have to start with your, you have to work from the top down, the district being your three to five-year umbrella, and then your annual, and then tacking in with, with School Committee. So we kind of are, you know, might have not gone about it in the exact, you know, best way, but, you know, we can work on that and try to bring that back, but I, I think that is...
I mean, I think we had a lot of transition this year, and having, I don't think we had fully identified our district goals with the start of the year, so I think going into next year, we'll be so much more prepared for this whole process than we were this year, but...
And perhaps maybe bring in someone who is willing to, you know, we did speak with some about coming to talk to us, because just when you think you understand, I mean, the woman I sat next to, she said, this is my third time I've attended this exact meeting with these exact people from Wakefield, because she said, you just, you know, it's very difficult to get it right. But they did give us a sample, and I do have the sample of Wakefield field goals, I might should have included them, but, you know, I, I do have their goals here, I'm happy to have Diane make copies or pass it around or whatever, get it, get it put out there.
Here from Beth.
I would agree with Russ, I think it's important that our goals do align with Marty's goals. I think that was stated at the conference, and I think that's something we all believe in. And while I do appreciate Jess's document, it's definitely well-thought-out, and I know she put a lot of time and effort into that, I do have to say that our original School Committee Goals were voted on at our September 13th meeting, and those are goals that we all agreed to move forward with. So I think I would have a little bit of difficulty introducing this new document, because there's goals on here that we didn't all agree on at that time. While some of it is kind of woven into our documents, some things are new, so I think I would have a problem with us moving forward with that when we haven't had ample discussion, whereas the original goals were goals that we already all voted on, on the 13th. So in the, in the, I guess I would say, in the effort to move forward with the goals and not kind of stagnate in this process, I would say that we, you know, we either make a motion or make one of the motions.
Yes, I, I think the one suggestion I, or the one thing that I feel very strongly about is that we really cannot take this into another meeting. I think we, we as a committee need to get to some other things that we can do to kick off the agenda, because of some things that we just continue to have in old business or ongoing business. I have a suggestion, just based on what I've heard and looking at the entire situation. Jess's document looks so much to me like a vision statement, like guiding principles, not that it couldn't be a goals document either, but my suggestion would be, what if we continue with the goals that we had already voted on and just adding the actionable items for this year? And then in addition, consider creating this document for not just a one-year term, but really like the School Committee's guiding principles and vision or something like that, because I think even, you know, even though I think that in some ways, if we wanted to achieve seven goals, we could, but I, and I see a lot of the language, or I see almost all of the language that's in the three pages, also just the spirit of, both documents are the same, and I think the objectives and the goals ultimately are just written differently, but encompass the same meaning. So my suggestion, just throwing it out there, would be to adopt the goals that we'd already voted on, add the actionable items to those, and then look at this as a, you know, an ongoing vision statement of the School Committee, and we could fine-tune it, you know, after we get through some old items, but it wouldn't be as time-sensitive, because we don't have to worry about having our goals and our actionable items posted on the, you know, before, it would get, allow us to move forward, but it would also consider this really fantastic document that you put together. And I think, you know, again, coming up with new, a blank statement of goals every year is also, you know, cumbersome and takes away from the overall vision of, of all of us. So that's the suggestion that I am throwing out there, but also I think, you know, the idea of having a motion would keep us focused, so that we know what we're voting on at this point. Stephanie?
I, I agree, I think that this document is excellent, and I'm kind of sitting here figuring, thinking about how, how can we use this? And I think that it can be used, kind of reworked, as a vision statement with a lot of these goals and underneath it, but in the future, I would want to use this document going forward when we talk about our School Committee Goals, because there are some real actionable items in here. I like how they're worded, and I think that we can use it for next year, but overarching, it does, the current one encompasses a lot already.
Yeah, I just want to second that, I think this is gonna be a great guide moving forward, and it's, 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 it really contains a lot of good information, a place for us to work from.
Russ?
Yeah, I like that idea, too. I think one thing we're kind of missing in both documents, which we learned at the conference, is that we really should be much more concrete about when we're gonna do things and what we're looking for, for an outcome.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I think Jess, your document is probably something, as far as the vision of our system, that would... that would be good on our website, it'd be good to actually inform why we have our other goals, and why we're trying to achieve certain things. Because I think this is much, I mean, the way it's written is great. But I just think right now, to try and move forward, we probably should vote for the other goals and then work on this. Some of these actually are goals, and some are just, you know, this is what we should be achieving as a community more than anything else. So I like the idea that you threw out, too.
I'm hearing a lot of thoughts, because we want to put a motion on the table, so then the thoughts can be focused on that actual motion and then.
Yeah. I, I move the school committee to add the actionable items to their approved 2017-18 goals as listed on the document dated October 27th, 2017. I guess that would be the first motion.
Second. Second, and then discussion related to this motion, or, you know, anything related to that motion.
I can add a second phrase to it, I guess, which would be, "And to subsequently work on using the Long Meadow School Committee goals presented by Ms. Hutchins to incorporate that into a future vision statement for the system." Diane, you're going to work on that.
Well, if I can all down it.
So.
You should have made the one.
I would second that add-on. Okay, or, or we could create two different motions here, that, you know, so, that we create two different motions.
Okay, so let's go with my first one.
And Beth, you seconded that first motion, correct. Discussion, Jess?
The one thing I wanted to highlight is goal one, and that's probably the most sort of vision statement, you know, not so much goal. And since the beginning of the year, and some of the things that have happened in our country, I think all of us have been thinking a lot about what we can do as a school district and a school committee. And what I wrote there, I was really hoping, not necessarily to be part of a goals statement, but I wanted to provide a platform for discussion about this language. I feel really strongly about this language, and sort of what we stand for as a school district, and that we, you know, accepting every single different kind of student, and making an overt and spoken, written commitment to embracing all different kinds of students from different backgrounds. I feel that it's critically important for us to really put ourselves out there in that way. So I'm not sure the best way to do it, whether we can sort of put mission statement on a future agenda, or, you know, I don't know. Or put it as part of our website, but I just somehow want to be putting that out there on behalf of our school district.
And I agree, and I think that could be part of this second motion, where we develop a, or the second, you know, action that we take, which would be to use your document and create a vision statement for the district from the school committee, something like that. So, let's just focus on the motion right now that we have on the table, which is to Russ's motion. Diane, do you want to read what you have?
So it's going to stay in this original motion.
Okay, and add.
I had it on October 27th, and then discussion, and then you said you were going to do a second motion. So I haven't changed that one.
We're on one.
Okay.
So, any more discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, opposed, and abstention. Okay. So, I would like to propose that we take this document, Long Meadow School Committee Goals 2017-18, and work on it after we button up a few of the items that we have, that have been ongoing for so long. It can even go to a subcommittee, but I think it's, it's very close to a final version, so I don't think there's a whole lot that might need to be done to it. I, I had some comments, too, so I don't know what the best method to do to gather all of our input on this would be, but we could kick it to Operation Sub, or we could create a Google document. But again, it would have to go at the bottom of the line for things that you guys have already done. Or we could just create a several, separate Google document where we could input our feedback on this document to Diane, and it wouldn't be on the next agenda, but, you know, when you have time, get to it, and then we'll circle back to this as an agenda item.
So, so we can't do a Google document because of the open meeting law?
To Diane, if it's set up by Diane and we don't see it.
We'll all get to see it.
Right.
Yeah, we could only send comments to Diane, then we'd just have to come back here and talk about them.
Right, which we could and would do, but not at the next meeting. And I do think it's, you know, time-sensitive in some respects, because I, I understand, and I, especially with goal one, I think that's a great thing to put out there. I understand Marty.
One thing to think about, a recommendation might be to think about, you know, once we've buttoned up the things that, Michelle was talking about, maybe in the springtime or even early summer, that you launch a visioning process and, you know, create a vision, a set of core values, and a strategic plan, all of which sit above your school committee goals, the district goals, my goals, et cetera, et cetera. So, and to echo what Melanie said, it, it might be worth thinking about bringing in, you know, an outside agency to assist with that visioning process, and to assist with the development of a long-range strategic plan, which, there's a lot of inputs already in place, the inputs from your goals, the input from the long-range plan, the input from, that we get from school councils and surveys, and so there's a lot of, a lot of pieces in place that would assist with the development of a vision, core values, and strategic plan. So, if that's something that you'd like me to sort of chase down or bring back as our recommendations to you, I'm happy to do that.
In an effort to kind of expedite it, I feel like Jess's document is really comprehensive, kind of hits across all things. And if Jess were willing to take people's comment suggestions and have them directed towards her, and then just have Jess bring it.
She can't, but if we, if we give them to Diane.
Not back before.
It doesn't matter, because she would get a quorum of our suggestions.
Okay, well, scratch that. What if Jess were just to take her document, rework it into a vision statement, and then bring it back to us? Then at that point, we could decide if you wanted it to go to a subcommittee, but subcommittees are.
As long as I had feedback from, can it go, can it go, it's, because it's hard writing anything in isolation.
You can give me your feedback.
And then.
And you rework it, and then I'll try to take that and put it in. Because you can't, you all can't do it, unfortunately.
Could, could the subcommittee, though, do it operations?
The operations could.
Because I mean, that's, I mean, I'm really willing to, and you're on operations, and I'd have to see how you feel about it, but I feel like that's where it belongs. Get away, and we'll take it on.
I don't want to cut this conversation short, but we actually have a deadline to get to another agenda item, because Tom and Dan are here to talk about the capital project list. So why don't we table this discussion just until the end of the meeting, in terms of what our plan is from here, and move on right now, I'm going to move the agenda to the capital projects list, FY19 and new business. Why don't you kick it off?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in your packet is a spreadsheet that has some, a listing of the proposed FY19 capital project list. So page one would be the prioritized projects for FY19. Pages, I believe, two, three, and four are additional projects that are not prioritized, but that are requests from the administration facilities that are items that may need attention at some point, but have not been selected for consideration for FY19. And then I believe the final page is just an update on projects that were funded in FY18. So just to give you a quick background, the process starts in the summer, where we'll reach out to the principals and ask them for any input on new projects that they would have interest in moving forward into the capital project process, and/or advocating for a project that already is on the list, but is not in the prioritized category. Additionally, we may move one of the projects from being prioritized based on action that has taken through the operating budget, and we no longer can support it in a prioritized, or in, for prioritized request in the year in which we're submitting new projects. So, and that's kind of the background, then. We work, Dan and I get together and go through the requests and any new items. And then we meet with the superintendent, and the representative from school committee this year was Jess. That meeting took place back in October, the end of October, and Jess and I have had some ongoing dialogue in regards to various projects and the priority. So today, we have the finalized document for your consideration, input, and approval to move on to the town manager. So I'm happy to go through each of the projects, if you would like to give background, or Jess, if you would like to.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I was just going to say that the challenging part of this process is always that we have a laundry list of things that are critical needs in the school department, and so sort of boiling it down to a few things, A, is difficult, but then, you know, with the knowledge that we likely would only get approved for the first few, is, is sort of frustrating. But, you know, we had a lot of good discussions, and we really did try to prioritize, you know, health and wellness and, in these, these goals, I mean, in these priorities.
Melanie, just for history, is there a certain amount of money that's set aside in general in the budget for capital? Is there a certain amount that you typically get through, like two, two or three, or just, if you can give us a little history?
In general terms, so I want to say in FY18, the town budget has approximately 1.6, 1.7 million dollars appropriated for capital projects.
Just for school committee?
No, total. And the process has been that we will submit our request to the town manager. He combines those with other requests from the other town departments, and puts together a list that then he submits to capital planning committee for review. I would say historically, our top three have made it onto the town manager's capital list that he's recommending. I would say specifically, even this current year, they pulled projects that weren't on our prioritized list because of things that occurred from the time in which the school committee approved it to when capital was considering it. For instance, the two boilers at Blueberry and Center were not necessarily prioritized, but in the time, the beginning of the heating season until when capital planning approved it, we had some major challenges. So they ended up getting moved up quickly because of the severity of the issues that they were experiencing. So I would say historically, we've been very successful in at least two to three projects every year. That's not to say there's a minimum amount or maximum amount that's allocated, I think, for the schools. I do think it really depends on the nature of some of the areas that Jess mentioned. Safety is obviously one of the important issues that I think any time that we're looking at them, and their impact on the environment and student learning, and at least from our perspective.
But ultimately, the town manager then compiles and makes a priority list that then goes to.
Capital planning, yes. Capital planning that has to submit back to the select board for final approval.
Do they get the final?
They do.
Okay.
There's our recommendations to the select board.
And one of my questions to Tom was also, because these, these price points are somewhat low on these items, why would, you know, I would hope that we would get approved for more than that sort of one, two, three this year. You know, sometimes we have really high price points on items.
Yes.
So, and I just had that one language contribution to the air conditioners. I don't know if we need it for the vote, if we're voting. Did you get the email that is?
I did, but not in time.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you saw it. Okay, all right.
Stephanie?
Can I ask, that engineering study, number seven without a cost affixed to it, given all of the things that fall under that, was there a reason that that's number seven?
No. So, this is the thing about capital, is that there's no science to it, if I may, Michelle, respond to her. I'm sorry for, speaking out of turn. It's, it's really challenging. I mean, there are no rules, there's no science to it. So, it's really helpful for the school committee to give feedback about priorities, and even if you see things that are on the laundry list, too, that pop out, I, you know, it's helpful to everybody.
I don't know if it's going to meet the capital project definition.
Right.
I think was one of the conversations we had in regards to this request, is will it fit into the definition that capital planning uses to evaluate project requests?
I think Tom and I have had a lot of discussions over many, many months about the new monitors that we purchased last year, and the information that we've gotten, and the high CO2 levels that are at the middle schools, and how do we address it? It's such a difficult issue, because it has so much to do with, you know, big, big facilities issues and the age of the school. So, I was, he was, he and I were struggling with how do we do something? Because, you know, it's, we can't do everything, but until we have a new middle school or middle schools, we need to do something to address those CO2 levels that directly impact those people in the buildings that are in middle schools. So, the best solution that we could come up with, for the purposes of getting some attention to the issue, was to put on an engineering study to try to look at what can be done to, to help. Because we're not experts, and we don't know the answer to that, so.
Steph? Just in regards to priority number two, maybe Tom and Jess can speak to this. I would hope that maybe more of our 11 priorities would be funded out of the list, because it looks like number two could maybe be combined with a request from the fire department. We're talking about the defibrillators.
Yes.
And parks and rec. I do see where, you know, we need to be in compliance with mass general law. So I would be, I guess would be hoping that that one would be considered a town-wide.
I asked the same question.
Maybe some of our other priorities would be moved up the list.
If I can, I think that's the expectation, is that we want to bring it forward to the school committee, so you understood the implications from the school side. But the dialogue has been with the fire chief, park and rec director, in regards to putting together a comprehensive town-wide request. But this is the need, these are the needs reflected of the school department.
Jess?
So, we don't have to put it on, we could make it as a separate request, but the reason we kept it on is because I think we all felt it was so critically important to have it.
I would agree, and I don't know, in terms of the needs on the town side alone, you know, if they'll meet the threshold from a capital dollar amount. So I think whatever moves forward, I would expect the town manager to take those two projects and, or three projects, and roll them together.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that the fire department is necessarily facilitating a request on their own, but I think they'd be working with the parks and recs, facilities for any town buildings that may need additional or to be provided with an ABD.
Stephanie?
Is there, I think what I'm struggling with is the, the term priority versus, we're going to throw this at you because this is what we think you'll fund, because there's a lot of big items on here that really need to be addressed, that I would put as a priority, but perhaps we don't have the money for, like that elevator at Glenbrook, where we're currently not in compliance, things like that. So I think I have a, it's difficult for me to say certain things are a priority for me, but it, when it seems like it's more, we're presenting it to them, because they're things that have a increased likelihood that they would be picked up. And to put the engineering study on there as number seven without a cost associated with that is difficult for me as well, because we're saying this is a priority, but we don't have a cost. So if we're not associating a cost with that, but we don't have the elevator as a priority, so I, I'm struggling with some of these top items, because I think they're being presented with, because you think there's an increased likelihood they'll be picked up, I'm not sure.
No, that wasn't.
Okay.
No, 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 not at all.
Then I don't know that I.
No, we just prioritize the best, like I said, there's no science, and there's no perfection when it comes to this process. It's very imperfect, but go ahead, Tom.
Well, and I would say even on number four, we've been. Well, and I would say even on number four, we've been told by capital for a number of years that they consider this maintenance. But, I mean, we hear from principals that this is an area of major concern for them. There is no comprehensive painting program.
Right.
Uh, the three elementary schools all have wallpaper throughout their hallways and it's most certainly deteriorating. It's, it's peeling in a lot of instances. Facilities, I think, has done a great job with the limited resources to try to tackle the areas that are in the greatest need. But capital has said, this is not in their mind.
Right.
It should be an operating expense and not a capital expense, but the cost associated with it, there's just no way the operating budget can, can address it. So again, not having an avenue to get it, this issue out on the table, we thought this was the best way to, to bring some attention to this ongoing issue. Principals would probably tell you it's one of their major top concerns is the, the environment from a cleanliness perspective.
Which is why the facilities issue I brought forward at the beginning of the year for capital, this is a problem. And this is why things are falling through the cracks. And this is a very good example of something that should be taken care of through our maintenance budget, as Tom stated. But here we are putting it on our capital projects list.
So why don't I make the motion and then we can discuss that. I move on the recommendation of the capital planning subcommittee, the school committee, that the school that we adopt the capital project list as presented.
Second.
I'm gonna read those before.
Now we'll move to more discussion and questions. And actually, I'm gonna jump in with a question, technical, technical question. So if capital gets this list, priority one through 11, and they reach number four and they decide they're not, they don't have $50,000 to give, are they able to jump to number five, which is $26,000? And so, we're not excluding any of the things that fall beneath a priority level?
Yeah, I, I believe the process would be that the town manager would put together a list of projects, but then have the five-year project list associated with the requested projects for FY19. So they most certainly have the latitude to move up or fund a portion of a project. They don't have to necessarily give you the full amount, especially when it's their phases. They could provide less resources in the first phase, which would then reduce the amount that you can accomplish in that very first year. But it's not necessarily restricting them from moving down the list to other projects that they have funding for.
Okay. So, you know, we wouldn't be eliminating the possibility of the exhaust fan replacement because, you know, because wallpaper removal and painting is above that.
Correct.
Okay. Stephanie?
I'm still struggling with number seven because I, I don't know that we've been presented with anything that would, um, bring this to number seven where we were presented with the need for an engineering study to determine the scope and cost to address high CO2 levels. I, um, would wanna hear from our maintenance on that. But we haven't been presented with anything and I don't know where that came from. And, and my second part is when we're collecting this list and there's a priority and is this just from Operation Sub? Or are, is each school and maintenance, are they weighing in on it and the prioritizing of it?
I think they weighed in on the prioritized list prior to this final one, before it went to Jess. The principals had an opportunity to weigh in. They saw what was being proposed to Jess. When Jess and I met, there were some changes made to the priority of projects and/or the order in which they are presented here. So, um, she actually moved up number four. It was lower on the list that was reviewed. And it was lower because of the likelihood of getting funded, as we've been told for a number of years. Um, I don't know if Jess wants to speak to number seven in terms of that engineering study. I would say some of that data's been from the devices that school committee authorized funding for last year. Some of the input, some of the information we're starting to see is it's showing that in both buildings, there is a consistent increase of the CO2 level when there's occupancy in the classroom. So nine o'clock, you can start seeing the rise. At three o'clock, you see it starts declining. Um, the systems don't function in a way to bring in enough fresh air to dilute the CO2 levels to the levels that are recommended, which I believe is 800 parts per million.
Yeah, parts per million.
So do, have we heard, um, it sounds like the data's there. When do we make the jump to making an engineering study to address it? Or is it that we need, uh, different air handling in there? I am.
Well, I think we acknowledge that the systems we have won't function to, to solve this problem. They weren't designed to do that. The code didn't require it at the time that they were designed.
Right.
Um, so they're not, they're, the system we have will never accomplish reaching the levels that are recommended.
Right.
Um, short of opening the windows and bringing fresh air in through that method, that's about the only, uh, solution we have at this time. We run the exhaust fans, we run the air handlers, um, but unfortunately, it does not, it's not equipped to exchange air at the level that's required to dilute it down to the 800 parts per million.
So it just sounds like you know the answer to it. I don't, that's where I question, do we need an engineering study to tell us that? And there's no cost associated with that engineering study, so.
Let's hear from Dan, just 'cause I know you have a time limit. We're all here, but.
I'm not sure which way to go with it. I mean, do you put an RFI out? I don't know. I mean, right now, it's, it's gonna be quite expensive. I don't know how expensive the study's gonna be, but the fix is gonna be very, very expensive. And I'm not sure what thresholds your triggers are for once you start hitting a certain threshold, you're gonna hit ADA requirement. So what your AAV says, you know, you will do this once you're, uh, once you hit these thresholds. So say you spend $300,000 on a building and now you're gonna have to put the elevators in, you have to put all handicap accessible in it. So you're, you're walking on a path that could be very expensive for a while.
Well, we should have those in anyway, the elevator.
Not disagreeing.
I mean, we're out of compliance with those already.
Right.
I just had a question about the CO2 levels. Do we know how high our levels are right now?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we have data that's showing, I would say consistently, they're getting up into the 12 to 400 range. But I would say there most certainly is data showing that in instances, it could be upwards of 2,000 parts per million.
And the recommended is 800?
I believe 800, below 800, I believe is the recommendation.
Jess?
And I think it's important to highlight that this is, as I said, Tom and I have been, and Marty, you know, I sent an email to Marty and Michelle. The, the CO2 levels are of great concern to me because we have the information. We know they're too high. Some of the symptom in the middle schools, we have the data. Some of the symptoms that it causes, general discomfort, headaches, fatigue, difficulty concentrating. And for some people, it can cause eye and upper respiratory irritation and an increased incidence of respiratory infections. So a lot of those initial symptoms I just described are symptoms that you wouldn't necessarily connect with high CO2 levels. You think, oh, my kid's tired. Oh, they're always tired, you know? But when we're seeing, when we have numbers, um, that we're tracking that are so high, what do we do to address it? In, in the, in the middle of trying to, um, trying to get new schools for the children who are there in those schools. As a school committee member, I personally feel very strongly that we need to be looking at these CO2 levels at all the schools and figuring out what we can do to help it. And as has already been mentioned, dilution is the solution. It's the most practical and important solution. And so does that mean that it's better to send out a letter to parents and teachers and staff and say, this is what, this is the information we have. We need to keep fans running at certain times a day. You know, it's not a perfect sort of structural solution, but it certainly will help the air quality in those schools while we're waiting. So, and buying, um, buying, buying fans for the windows, um, that, that sort of thing that teachers can use. But, you know, people, if, the staff and the families need to have the information and particularly the staff. And this is one of the things Tom and I discussed is if they have the information, they understand the issue, they can make some decisions in the classroom of sort of taking responsibility for, um, helping the issue while we're trying to find better solutions.
Melanie?
So a lot of my questions have been addressed. I, I guess I, I agree that we might not be able to fix the big problem, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But even maybe if it's something as simple as opening a window a little bit when students aren't in the classroom, maybe just to bring those levels down a little bit. You mentioned there was a new regulation to be less than 800. When, when, what's this regulation?
No, I think that's what's in place now.
I think it is, yeah.
It's in place now.
I think, yeah.
That's right. It's 800, yeah.
And, you know, again, it can be one of those things where, yes, the levels are high. What does it exactly mean? Do we know for sure what it means? Yes, you can have these symptoms, but they could maybe not be related. Do we know exactly how much is too much? It's, it's one of these things where, you know, we definitely should look into it, but how much is too much? And how much is an exact cause-effect relationship? But we can certainly do some simple things like open windows when students aren't in the classroom or things like that to get that number down a little. And then the only other thing I wanted to add, um, just in the, uh, capital project list in general is I can totally appreciate you guys sitting down picking, you know, coming up with a priority of, you know, one to 11. I guess when I look at things at my house and I set up a priority, you know, there's, there's, there's wants and there's needs. Maybe there could even be prioritizing of the wants and the needs. And of the, of the needs, again, maybe breaking down between, uh, for medical or health reasons, like the crumbling wallpaper or so forth versus aesthetic. You know, we look at the, you know, the center school balcony that's all crumpled. It has been crumpled since my kids were there 16 years ago and it, it is a problem. Do they, you know, do we go in and out of there? And again, it's not great to have to rope it off and say danger, keep off. But again, picking what, what, what's, you know, for a health reason priority, what's the setting, like a boiler's gonna go or went. I don't know. I, that, that's how I do things in my own thinking at my house. I kind of break down even further from the, the ten. But that's just me and that's just my.
Um, I just wanna say, um, I'm not gonna vote for this. And the reason is because, um, in part because seven, because of an engineering study. No, no doubt, we're getting readings that are too high. I don't think it's that difficult to understand how to get CO2 levels down, that it's an air handling problem, open a window. So until we do something like opening windows and measure those CO2 levels, I would not pay thousands of dollars to have an engineer come in and tell us to open a window. So I don't know if you can't open a window at Glenbrook and then it's, then I would prioritize the air handler for Glenbrook and Williams. And then it's a matter of cost and yes, it's a matter, but, but I.
But you're fixing a, a little component. You gotta fix the whole system.
The whole, and do you need, okay, so the, the big question is, do you need a study to tell you what you need to fix?
Right now, if you take this building right here, there's, there are CO2 monitors in there and it's all gone through flat files and computers and it, it'll open the outside air dampers, go back and forth. And it, the exhaust fans are tied to the, uh, fresh air coming in. So it, it's not just go put this in here. I mean, you really have to have the exhaust fans now talking to your, your air makeup because you don't want your building negative. You know, now the doors are slamming shut and such. So you, you have to have all these components talk to each other and that's what it comes down to. So opening the windows you can because honestly, now you're putting all the, uh, during the winter is not there. But you have all, during the spring and fall, you have all the stuff, the air filter's supposed to be catching for you. You know, you wanna keep the pollutants outside. It'll dilute it, yes, but there should, there should be tempered air coming into the building. Because if you have a fan, you have a little kid sitting there next to the window and it's 50 degrees out, he's sitting in front of a giraffe right now. So you, you aren't really, you know, you're creating a different problem. I agree with what you're saying. You should fix it. I'm not disagreeing. I, I, but it's, you gotta have company and say, okay, you, you have, you know, 50,000 square feet. You need somebody CFM coming in. Here's what I suggest you do with your system. So I can go fix anything I want, but I think this one needs a kind of a recipe saying, okay, you need somebody air handlers for air coming in. You have some of the exhaust units coming out. And then we have a pneumatic control system over there. You need, uh, what they call DDC, direct digital controls to control these two components together. So there's a lot to it. I can put anything I want in there, but I'd like to have somebody say, this is the best way to do it. This is the cheapest way to do it. This is, this is more fuel efficient. I mean, that's what we want. I mean, if I start doing something like that, our, our fuel budget might, if you put the wrong one in there, it's gonna go through the roof. So, yep, we should. There's no choice about it and I agree with your standard go up and like that. But I don't know which one to go with. That's why I'm asking for helping this one.
Well, that's helpful to hear because I, I just, what you're saying is that there may be the possibility to retrofit or do something with the existing system.
The existing systems are well past their life expectancy and they wouldn't take the changes they would need for the type of actuators and stuff to get in there. So I'm gonna have a DDC system controller, it's a 12-volt controller trying to move pneumatic actuator. You really gotta get all things working together. And it'd be like trying to put, uh, you know, a brand-new Cadillac motor in a Model T. They're not gonna fit. It's not gonna work. So you're gonna have to get everything that's married to that system.
So is the engineering study to?
Can I just hang on one second? Do you have to leave at 1:30 also or?
I'm leaving with Tom. So when he's late, I'm late.
As long as you're with Tom, you're good.
We have to leave about 20, a quarter of the very latest.
I think, well, I think Stephanie's questions were headed in the same direction as mine. So, so knowing we, you know, in our SOI, we, um, describe the HVAC system as being past its useful life.
It's past its life.
And that the expenditures will require something that goes beyond what normal capital expenditures would allow for, right? We, we said that this is gonna take a bigger effort than capital could possibly. So I think the question that I have, is there, you know, is there a, a capital fix? Is there a capital band-aid? Is there a capital improvement that would address some of what we've been talking about here?
That's what I'm trying to tell you is that I can fix anything, but I'm not sure if I'm fixing it the right way.
He's saying the engineer needs to design.
Right. I wasn't aware of what a PE stands as, you know, this is what you should be doing, you know? I mean, I can put anything in there, but it's not the right thing.
You were waiting to talk, Tom.
No, it's okay.
This is what we needed to bridge the gap. This is how we came. We, we had a lot of discussion about this issue and that's why it's on the list.
But I think to be clear, the engineering study is not going to change our current system.
Correct.
The, 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 the result of this study are going to be, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars and changes to the building systems. Because we can't tweak our current systems to address this problem. I think Dan said that many times, our current systems cannot, we can't change settings. We can't change, uh, the dampers to address this problem. So the engineering study is not necessarily gonna tell Dan to do something different with our current system or change our building management system to bring more air in because we're already running them 24/7 to bring as much air as we can based on their functionality. So I think to, to your question, it's not about telling us how to fix the system with what we have. It's what we need to bring in to fix the problem. Which then will tell us we need whatever, hundreds of thousands of dollars or more to address it.
That's, I think that's a.
Well, I don't wanna put a price tag on something that we don't have information about yet, though. I think we're getting a little ahead of the game.
It's gonna be very expensive, I bet.
Stephanie, I just wanna let you carry on with your, 'cause I interrupted you before.
Well, I was just, I, I think that's the sticking point is that what are you paying for the engineering study to do? You're paying for it to tell you what to bring in. And are we paying thousands of dollars for an engineering study when we know that we're in a situation that we couldn't?
I don't doubt they might, they're gonna say, I don't know what they're gonna say, uh, Stephanie, uh, but they might give you some, some fighting chance. They might say, say, you know, Mr. School Committee, you need this X amount of dollars. Or it's not as bad as they're saying. The study might say, hey, you, you're at certain, such range, a certain time a day, you know, they might know about it. I'm a mechanic. I'm not a PE. So there, there, there's people out there know a lot more, more about this than I do. And that's what this study would do. It would say, yes, you can do this with it, or I would do that. You guys take an active approach, it, it, the town should be, feel happy the way you're taking on it. But I can't give you the answers, you know? So the study will say, I know they're gonna say, this equipment is antiquated and shot, you need to do something else. They might give an interim fix, but I don't know what that would be, you know? I mean, like I said, the solution to pollution, dilution. We are running them 24/7. We got, you know, exhaust fans running, everything else. But outside of that, I'm not sure more of the systems you have in place can do for that building.
And no windows open?
We, well, windows, but you got, you have little kids sitting next to an open window now. So now they're coming to school with scarves, sweaters, and everything else on. I mean, it's only, I'll have to see if I can give you the chart. It's only some really peak times, like the band rooms, a couple of other rooms, at, towards, toward the middle of the day. And then they, they drop off gradually. There's no classes in there. You know, it, it's, it's not like I'm gonna run another building. If my kid's in the building, it would be safe, you know? I, I use the same thing you mask. If it's good enough for my kids, it's good enough for yours. I, I feel confident. I feel safe. I feel confident, I feel safe. I would not, if I didn't think it was safe, I'm on TV, I'd tell you to get out of the building. I think it's a very safe building, I don't, I'm not worried about it, we're not, we're above the guidelines, though. So, you have a fair request? Let's look at it with engineer. I am not an engineer.
You don't feel like if you crack a window for 10 minutes at that peak time, in the meantime, I'm not saying we don't have a problem, that we're a little long-term, but when your kid's there and you're hearing that and the side effects, what can we do right now? Can you crack that window for 10 minutes and...
My kids aren't in the classroom. I mean, there were times where classrooms sat empty for a block, or they're at lunch, or...
Let me just get to Beth, because her hand is kind of full.
So many things to say about this, and I appreciate everybody's comments, and I appreciate your in-depth explanation, that's just really helpful. My takeaway from this is, I mean, I hate to be pessimistic, but maybe it's a moot point, because it's seven on the list and there's no dollar sign, what are the chances the town's going to jump on board with this one? I don't know. I think it's important that we have number five up there, because it seems like the exhaust fan replacement is going to kind of alleviate some of these issues. But I would agree with Stephanie saying I would have, I like that five is above seven, first of all, but I, I think maybe, to me, it's premature for the engineering study. I'd like to wait and see what happens with MSBA. The first thing they do tell you is, do not put any money into any of this until we invite you into the system, if we do invite you in at all. So, but that being said, I would never put a student in jeopardy, health-wise, waiting on potential money that may or may not come from the state. But I guess I have a problem maybe funding something like that when we're in this kind of critical timeline. I'm more inclined to see that five and above, I think the exhaust fans at Williams are an important bit of, maybe a little bit of the puzzle for that.
The exhaust fans at Williams, though, to be honest, the kids don't take showers anymore, so, they don't. So, I mean, if you go in the locker rooms over there, there's storage rooms, so you're ventilating storage rooms. And also with a building, you don't want to be sucking in through air through the cracks. So what happens is you have a valve that closes on your heating system, and now I've got air, it's going to, it's going to come in someplace. So if all the dampers are closed, all the doors are closed, it's going to come through the cracks in the building, stuff like that. You have the possibility of, you have what they call a negative building, you don't want that, especially during the winter. You want your building positive, you want, because you want to be pushing air out, you don't want the air coming in through, going across your pipes. So you have a pipe sitting there, even though it was hot water, if there's no flow on it, it'll, it'll freeze. So you don't want to set your building up to fail, and just to save the CO2. Again, you want to look at the whole building, you want to just go do something, you want to make sure, you don't want to create another problem.
If you don't think, if you don't think that's going to help with the overall numbers, and I don't think we need to keep it on there...
Yeah, because they're not running now, I don't, I don't see they're going to get any different...
You don't see them as helping that much?
No. I went through and made sure every exhaust...
Then maybe it should come off.
If you took the exhaust fans off, it's, you save a few bucks.
Then maybe it should just come off.
Have them more strategically located than the old bathrooms that aren't being used.
They're not, they're locker rooms.
No, I'm saying it, that's the location problem. Fans could be helpful somewhere else, it sounds like.
Just on a note, so everybody knows, we've already replaced the majority of them. So, there are, I don't know, 30, 26?
Twenty plus anyways.
Yeah, so I think these are the remaining four, six, and they're in areas that probably were not prioritized with the first two phases of this project. So, this was the final phase of this project.
Do you agree that we should take it off if Dan thinks it's not going to...
Sure.
Why don't we just take off number five, if everybody's comfortable with that? Based on what Dan's saying?
Is there anyone that objects to taking five off as a priority? Okay. And it sounds like the other topics that I continue to hear, and your thoughts and comments, are the engineering study number seven. So, outside of that, are there any other projects on this priority list that anyone has a question or issue with?
Just really quickly, okay, the Russell Fields enhancements, the scoreboards at the Russell Fields, just a thought, you know, is this something that could possibly be done, like with fundraising, booster clubs, like advertising? It seems to me that there's so many important things that we need done, that, yes, I agree a scoreboard is important, but I don't know if other districts are doing something with, like booster clubs, advertising, you know, I don't know.
The thought with this project was, not necessarily capital, but maybe CPA funds, so CPA a few years ago allowed for revenue or funds received to be used for current recreational space, which was a change in the statute, it used to be for creating new recreational space. So they gave us the initial 5,000 for the nets that you see along Bliss Road. And so, as part of that, we thought maybe CPA would assist in replacement of those scoreboards, not necessarily capital. Boosters most certainly could. When we get into advertising, we're talking a whole nother conversation that, in regards to who owns the fields, who should the revenue go to, who should approve the advertising, so that's a whole nother dialogue, but, and most certainly, something we could consider.
I have a quick question. Are there any other items that didn't make it that were very close on the non-priority project requests that you would like to, you know, just throw out there at us? There was nothing that was, that we just couldn't put on the priority list?
No, I think, I think our philosophy has been, we'll put it on and let either school committee and/or the town decide that it's not. We tried to put things that we know need to be addressed, they might not be addressed in the first year that they even make the prioritized list, but we try to be conscientious and not put, and not hesitate to put projects on there, even if they might not get a fund it, but...
And I would say, to follow up with what Tom is saying, the roof replacement at both the middle schools is something that is constantly a major issue that we are not putting on. I don't know if you put it on last year, I don't think you did.
We haven't put it on the prioritized list.
Right, so huge issue, huge price tag, huge issues.
Stephanie?
Can someone speak to the protective film for the doors and the windows at $45,000?
Sure, I can. So this was a project initiated by the high school administration. You look at the front of the building, there are so many glass panels. They, there was a concern with access of a hostile intruder, that a weapon would easily provide them access to the building. You know, no matter what building access system we have in place, all they need to do is break a window and they're immediately into the space. So, they contacted a vendor who has a product, and not just one vendor, it's a, it's common out there, where they can put a film, a transparent film on the glass, and it won't stop a bullet, but it most certainly would slow down an intruder from, even with a broken window, from gaining access into the buildings. So based on their initial concept, we kind of expanded that to look at all of the buildings to say, where are we vulnerable for somebody who wants to access a building to get in with a weapon? And so, that's kind of where this project came from.
Beth?
I just want to piggyback on that quickly and say that I'm actually glad that that's a priority on, on the list, and I appreciate your further explanation of it. I do remember during the high school building project, especially during schematic design, that exposed kind of vulnerable glass entryway was a big source of discussion. I wish it had been redesigned differently, but, you know, we can't go back to that. I know that that was a huge sticking point during that, that part of the building process. So I think if we have some type of creative solution like this with some type of product that will, you know, like you said, not, not stop a bullet, but make that a little bit safer, and yet still be transparent, I'm glad it's on the priority list.
And I could just follow up. We did ask the police department to view, I think it was a YouTube video, just a generic manufacturer of it, just from the concept of would they support it, and they did. They thought it was a good idea.
Were they familiar with the product?
I believe they heard of it.
Do we know, I just asked, because $45,000 is a lot, and I think that the idea behind it is great, but there's a lot of marketing stuff out there. So how, who did the research, and how do we know that it's going to actually do what it says it does beyond the YouTube video?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a vendor who's done some work here, who does speak to it, there's different, they call it mill, Dan, I don't know exactly what that reflects or means, but different thicknesses, I guess, of the material that can be put on, which then can have different resistance to access. So, they quoted us two different, and the individual from this vendor said they do it in a number of schools throughout the country. So, I most certainly think if we were to gain approval for this project and funding, we most certainly would have to go out to bid, and have a clear specification, and probably be engineered through the town's engineer, but right now, it's just...
You could be more specific at that point, what you wanted.
Exactly what we need, and where, and so on.
This was just to give us a ballpark estimate of how much it was being, or just choosing a particular vendor. Is there, is there any reason not to move that up on the list? You know, were the, were the other things considered to be more, you know, states, more important from a safety standpoint? You know, I guess, looking at wallpaper removal and painting, is that more of a hazard, let's say, than, than...
No, there's no reason not to move it up. I think maybe some of the thinking was that it's the first time showing up on the capital list, it was not on there last year, not even on the lower section of the list, so it's a brand-new project request to make it from not existing to being up in the top, well, how did we not know, or have this as a concern in previous years? But I would say, there's no reason why it can't be put up wherever the committee feels it belongs.
And then, I see this as district, so this would, this estimate related to any of the schools that have high profile, or...
Yeah, it was...
Obviously, mainly LHS, I would imagine, but...
Yeah, we looked at all six buildings.
Yeah, I think that goes back to prioritizing for safety, even though it hasn't appeared before, and I get your reasoning of why you put it there, but again, do we prioritize safety versus painting the pool? I mean, I don't know anything about pools and why they need to be painted, and it could be needed, but do you prioritize safety?
Yeah, just on the pool, just quickly, it is a, it's an ongoing challenge for us.
Yeah, I just don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't necessarily know that it's a safety as much as it is keeping it operational.
Right, or a necessity, but that sounds like a necessity, not a safety necessity. It's tough.
Well, I, I think we discussed the peeling paint issue as being kind of, you know, when you have peeling paint in a pool, it's disgusting, and who knows what kind of gross chemicals are coming out, you know, I don't really want my kids swimming in that pool, so, that, and it's been on this list before, and it was done improperly the first time, and it just needs to get fixed.
Yeah, and that should be maintenance.
I mean, for God's sake, I just, you know, it's one of those things, same with the wallpaper and the...
Yeah.
But I, you know, I get what you're saying.
Okay, Beth?
I'm just curious, do we still have a motion on the table?
We do. We do. So, yes, I'm hopefully aware of it.
Beth's keeping us honest.
I guess, we have a suggestion to remove five, so we'd amend the motion to remove five, and if there's, you know, strong feelings, voice them now about removing or changing any order. Stephanie?
This entire document is very tough for me. I mean, we've got fire suppression ones that we're not putting as priority, I haven't heard. I can only assume that all of this was, you know, vetted and decided, but these top priorities, the ones that are listed to me largely are the lower cost and appear to be ones that you feel like will get put through.
No, that's not why they're prioritized.
Okay, so fire suppression is on there for a kitchen, it's on there for a school, it's like, we've got, when we're talking about safety...
Looking at non-prioritized?
Yeah, we've got a lot on there when we talk about safety that's not...
But the middle schools are, have been off for years, because, it's chicken and the egg, but...
But then we're talking about an engineering study when we have safety things that are not being addressed because of cost and...
If I didn't agree with Beth, that the town will never agree to seven anyway, I'd take it off, but it's irrelevant to have it on, because there's no price tag and they're not going to agree to it, so. They can either take it off or leave it, but...
But doesn't it weaken your argument about what is a priority and what is not, when you're putting something...
So I'd say take off seven.
But then what about all of the fire suppression things? I'm trying to, to, I think there was one at Glenbrook, there was...
Are you looking at non-prioritized project?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. See, online, it's blurry, and I'm starting to get a headache, for whatever reason, the PDF went in and it's, it's very blurry. So I'm working with a blurry document, so...
So you're looking at longer, you're looking, so look at my hard copy, is that helpful? This is the list that we're trying to vote on.
I can't tell. This is what I...
I think Stephanie's point is valid, which is we have an elevator, we have fire suppression, we have all the things we put in the SOI, basically, that need to be replaced. And the question is, do we put those on the priority list even though we know the town won't approve them, because we're looking at changing the buildings?
Right. So that's why I keep saying, this list is based on things that we think that will be approved. If we thought that they were going to approve things...
For a minute, the only thing I can respond with is that capital, I think, has been clear to us that until they know what we're doing with middle schools, they're not inclined to put money into the middle schools. So that, I think, went into some of the thought process of, what do we put on prioritizing, what don't? And that's, I think, why you see such a long list for both middle schools, and not many projects that are prioritized this year. And I think that's been the last couple of years.
You can make a case that you've already expressed the middle school needs as a huge priority of this committee through the submission of an SOI, and so many of those middle school-related items exceed what capital could possibly fund, even if they put all of their funds towards those issues, so...
Right. That's why we kept the roof thing off.
Yeah. It's a bottomless pit. Once you, once you pick any middle school system, it, you...
Money bet.
But if the SOI doesn't happen in the next few years, then we've got to start spending money on middle schools and this.
And I think they'll probably have to support that, too, or that'd be a renovation of some sorts in some respects. So, Karen?
Just quickly, and I have no idea how these are typically submitted, but could we put priority one as the middle schools with no price tag, just so they are clear that this is our priority number one? And then put the others, knowing they're not going to approve that anyway, just as like sort of a statement?
We could put whatever we want on it as a statement, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
They'll read it.
Whatever you guys want, I can change the order any way you want.
I think they, last year, we put on a large number for technology to say, hey, this is something that's...
It was on the list, it was the last prioritized project last year.
Yeah, but we put it, Michael was on last year, and we put it on the list to get exposure to the fact that we're going to need to be replacing devices, so, yeah, there's, there's strategy and politics behind it, too.
So if anybody has a, an amendment to the motion on the table, I'm happy to, you know, hear from you. Let's just try to stay focused on the motion and taking some action. I, I'm hearing, you know, potentially taking seven off, I'm hearing potentially adding something, let's just have amendments to the motion, so we as a team can take some action on our thoughts.
Are they looking for this now?
Yes, it has to be completed at this meeting. Currently on the table, we have the motion to approve the capital project list as presented, however, taking off number five. Removing number five. Is there any other changes that we want to make to this document? If so, let's do that in the form of an amendment to the motion. Russ?
An amendment could be, we eliminate seven and add a footnote that says, we have not addressed many major middle school issues, because our understanding is that the capital, whatever they're called, capital committee, is not considering middle school issues at the moment due to the SOI process or something.
Are you making that motion, or are you suggesting that?
Yeah, that would be my...
Second, I second that.
Okay.[1743.83] Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion with the amendment on the table? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Diane's gonna work out a word again.
Fun. Thank you very much, good luck.
Oh, thank you.
So we had moved the agenda, let's go back to the superintendent annual plan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Contact me, we want parts of our old boilers.
How much can we sell them for?
No, no, they're the same boat we are, they can't find parts of the boilers.
Oh, really? We can make some money off that.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Shell, can I say something about this?
About superintendent and capital? Yeah. Next time, for moving forward for the capital projects, when we get this, can we do this? Talk about maybe doing this a different way? Seeing it beforehand, having discussion or something?
So a two-meeting?
Maybe. Yeah, because I, you know, I, I didn't like to, I voted against it, not because I'm against these things, but I think this whole, I think it needs to be reworked.
Okay. I think Marty and we'll tell Tom, noted in the minutes.
Yeah, how we're prioritizing and then if we're taking maintenance and moving it to capital, maybe we can just rework the whole.
And I, I agree, I think this topic could be a two, should be possibly a two-minute, two-meeting discussion before we have to finalize it.
And that would, excuse me, that wouldn't be difficult to do. We would just meet earlier.
Right, right. Yeah, I agree. It's just this time, we don't have it, because it has to be submitted by Friday. Okay, superintendent annual plan, writing.
Good. So again, I would remind you that the evaluative process for superintendent is similar to the evaluative process that all educators experience where there's a self-assessment and goal-setting period, and that's what you have in front of you today. Again, as a reminder, the superintendent's goals, there's expected to be three components, professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and then incorporation of district goals. And so that's all reflected in the document. I hope that you see that there are a lot of revisions that reflect the input of various committee members. And the last thing I would mention is that, at the end of the day, when you have an opportunity to evaluate me in a summative way in June, your evaluation will be based on whether or not you feel like I have achieved this plan, but also whether or not you feel like I've met the standards for superintendent's that Desi sets out. So it's, this is really only sort of a part of the overall evaluation that school committees conduct. So it's, and it's, and it's in a form that, again, hopefully reflects the input of individual committee members and I'm happy to answer any and all questions about it.
Melody?
Can you, to clarify, Jess had some feedback for you and you've already incorporated that into here?
Yes, as best I could, yes. So I think there was-
Whatever you two decided, yes, and incorporate.
Yeah, I think there was, and Jess, you can help me out with this, I think there was an interest in ensuring, with the communication piece, ensuring that we're making good use of press releases. There was some new language relating to inclusive practice to make sure it reflects really some of the things that even were shown in Jess's goal document earlier. And the, what else? Those are the things that come to mind right now.
Okay. Yeah, did see any more contact? I do want to say, Marty, thank you so much for being so patient and for being open to all of our suggestions. It'd be a lot of work, you having seven bosses and trying to put all of their feedback into your work. I appreciate the process that you went through to develop this.
Actually, I think I, I really enjoyed the opportunity to meet with individual committee members on the goals and I think I would want to make that part of my rollout in future years. It was helpful.
That's what I thought, and speaking to you, I think that was a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Including all of us.
Thank you, Marty.
Yeah.
I can entertain a motion, if anyone would like, it's on here.
I move that the school committee approve the superintendent's annual plan as presented and dated November 15, 2017.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any more questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on our agenda is the water dispensers for rooms A-12 and A-15. Jess, would you help us speak to this?
Yep, Tom's not here, so he has all the pricing information and I don't have that.
Oh, we don't? Is it in our-
I had suggested last year that it would be a good practice for central office to have water dispensers to cut down on the use of plastic water bottles. And I feel that as, you know, sort of the leaders of the district, we should be setting an example for the whole district in using, reusing reusable water containers and not, you know, continually using plastic. So I thought it would be a low-cost and important thing to incorporate. I suggested we have one in the school committee room and one in the meeting room.
Karen?
Just a quick question, Jess, and I don't know if you had talked about this earlier. Is there a reason why they can't use the bubbler or whatever, the water?
The filler.
The bubbler.
Yeah, the water bottle filler.
I kind of forgot about the filler being there, to be honest, when this originally came up.
Yeah. Which I use.
No, I think it's probably more important for that side, you know, maybe just the room in there, but yeah, for the school committee room, we probably can, but that's a good point. Yeah, you're right.
Stephanie?
I feel that it's important to refill your bottle, but I also feel that it's okay to also encourage someone to just merely walk down the hallway to the bottle filler.
Or bring their big-
Go to the bottle filler in the hallway. But I do think we should have, I think for guests who are coming here, I really do think it's just something we should have somewhere, either in the waiting room or in the conference room for people who are coming.
I think they can walk.
But people don't necessarily know about that, so.
So my question-
I don't know, Marty, what do you think? You guys are the ones who want to entertain.
I was just gonna call you out.
With the, with the plastics.
But I also think most of us have our own bigger jugs from home that we can also bring in and-
Well, it's all the people that are coming in and out.
So you're thinking more, well, then maybe you could answer that. I mean, you're the ones dealing with people coming in and out who might not be caring no-
Yeah, currently when we have guests, you know, frankly, we do, we'll grab a Poland Spring bottle that will keep us supplied.
We do that a lot.
Like if you look at, would, be happening a lot?
Yeah, when we have meetings, we have like a ton of water bottles and it's always bothered me.
I think we can go either way. We can, we can get a tank here, we could make cups available there with a sign notifying visitors that there's a dispenser down the hall.
Right.
At your, at your pleasure on this one.
Here's the thing, I always appreciate us being role models and setting a good example like Jess said. That being said, I think I'm kind of opposed to this because I feel like it's up to the individual to bring, I think it's trending more towards people understanding, you know, the, the plastic water bottle. And I think you'll find more people are bringing their own containers to things and bringing their own water bottles. I think it's, let's leave it to people to bring their own water or incorporate their own container, whatever they want to use, or walk and use the one in the hallway. I'm not really ever, I'm not really sure what the cost is to refill this type of thing. I don't know if there's a monthly charge, I'm not sure about any of that. And I'm always kind of inclined to not approve something that's directly benefiting or impacting the kids in the system. So, I mean, it seems a little, I don't want to say frivolous, I understand the importance of it, but I don't support something that's, that's not really benefiting the kids. I think it should be up to people to bring their own water, provide their own drink.
Can I just add on a practical note? I think the reason the water bottles are given, the plastic one, is because people don't have a container or vessel for the water. So this won't solve that problem. I think we, and that is truly the problem. I've come here before forgetting my container and then I don't have a way to get water unless I use a plastic bottle. So if we want to think about it in those terms, I think that's really what it is about why people go for the plastic bottle versus a refiller.
I mean, could we simply have one of the big containers I know at my home when I'm entertaining and I kind of fill with water and ice and you pull the little spout and get your water?
That's a great idea.
Is it, is it, I mean, could we more invest in one of those? Is there ice available?
When we have, when we have gatherings, professional development, or we're hosting outsiders, Diane will arrange through Whitsons to have one of those dispensers.
What if we have one of our, oh, fundraiser just-
So, yeah, they are our own, basically, yeah, Whitsons is our provider, so they just bring down a-
From the cafeteria.
Yeah, yeah. But-
And they, do they have ice?
We could put, we could put a cup dispenser next to the water dispenser in the hallway. That could be a good solution.
As long as we're not providing, I just don't feel comfortable providing loads and loads of water bottles at all these functions. It just, it just doesn't feel responsible to me.
Okay. So are we gonna take any action on this? I did pull up the, in case anyone was interested in the pricing, we did have it in our packets a while back, so that's what I was doing, I'm sorry.
So let's move to a vote since we don't, you know-
Okay. So we don't have a motion on the table?
I, I made it.
Oh, you did?
Didn't I?
No, no.
Oh, okay, so I don't think we need a motion then.
Okay.
We're good.
This is, all right.
Moving on.
Thank you very much. Okay. New business, we've done the capital projects, we are on to the MCAS report.
My computer might die on me.
During the capital project.
Seven specifically.
I'm sorry, Sue, you have a second anyway. I missed the overnight field trip requests, let's do those. We have overnight field trip requests for students from Williams Middle School to travel to Philadelphia and Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. If anyone would make a motion on these, they are in your packet or in, on your agenda? Recommended motion?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the overnight field trip request for the students from Williams Middle School to travel to Philadelphia and Gettysburg, Pennsylvania from May 30th to June 1st, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Questions? I, I say this every year and I will remind Tom again, I would like to make sure that we are offering families some sort of support if they cannot afford the trip in full because it is so highly attended by the students. It's a school-sponsored trip and such a high percentage of students go that I think we need to be conscious of that, so I'm going to remind him again and we'd like that to go in the minutes. And Marty, if you could follow up just to make sure that we're conscious of that. Any other, Stephanie?
Just piggybacking on that, as well, it might be for a future discussion, but talking about the affordability of the, of the trips and whether fundraisers are used to help kids be able to attend, I don't think that they are for these. So that might be something to talk about in the future, just making sure that kids can attend if they want.
And I think possibly we'll talk about, I would like to talk about it at finance sub just for this, for these upcoming years, so. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. And we have another overnight field trip request from the Long Meadow High School. This is an annual request for the Accidental's Retreat. Does anyone want to make the motion that's on our agenda?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the overnight field trip request for students from Williams Middle-
It was written twice.
No.
So it's from Long Meadow High School?
Yeah, this is, oh, sorry.
It should say-
Well, Long Meadow High School.
To Long Meadow High School to travel to Philadelphia and Leighton Mass.
They're traveling somewhere else.
Oh.
Where are they going? They did make it, unfortunately. They're traveling to Leighton Mass.
Yes, just Leighton Mass.
Just Leighton, so just the Philadelphia part. Right there.
Yeah. So, so moved, you have the language. Do you want me to say it again, Diane?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Is there a second? So we have one? Okay. And any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Now the MCAS report.
So it's exciting!
So we have a little bit of a different report this year because we have a new MCAS, so we'll talk a little bit about that. This is, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the little posters on the first page here. These are our preschool students, literally the next generation, right? And if anyone ever was familiar with special anxiety in the Advent Department, we pop over to preschool and it all goes away, basically. So Halloween's a big happening around here and they expect them for the plate in preschool. Hermione on the left and Tiger on the right.
So it's a dance party this year, right?
There was a dance party, I didn't make it to the dance party, but I heard you did.
No, no. It's not a dancing superintendent.
I was in the dance party, yeah. And Marty, you want to speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, so in, in the broadest context, to think about the education students receive in Long Meadow as part of the state of Massachusetts. And so when we think about it, our students have a great opportunity. As I see it, they have an opportunity to be educated in one of the highest-performing districts in the highest-performing state in the country. And so the statistics that Sue has up there sort of captures that. And so I think it's a great opportunity that our kids have and I believe that we're putting them in a position to be competitive in college and career long after they leave Long Meadow High. Massachusetts is leading the way, so.
So just some considerations when we're looking at our MCAS assessments and our scores, that there are many ways to measure student growth and achievement. I think we do that well in Long Meadow, MCAS is not the end-all, be-all for certain. One data point among many, that we focus our classroom instruction on the frameworks, the Mass State frameworks, and as we align pre-K through 12 for that, the focus just gets more clear. It's important that we look for any patterns of student achievement or potential challenges or changes in data that, you know, are alarming and to consider that there are many non-academic achievements also, not just academics around here. And I think we talked about sports and music and all of that great stuff already, so that was timely. I think you potentially have seen some of these MCAS facts. Our original MCAS test is now 20 years old. I remember when it first came out and there was this huge, you know, buzz about it and the students were nervous and they were anxious and I can't, you know, now they kind of take it with not too much going on. So now here we go again with the new legacy version. And legacy is given now in ELA in math in grades three through eight. Everybody took the new version, next generation. And the legacy MCAS in ELA in math in grades 10 and science five, eight and 10. So we have some old test styles and some new ones this year. Some of the differences in the new assessment system is that they pay particular attention to critical thinking and application of knowledge and making and demonstrating connections between reading and writing. Some of the synthesizing that students are asked to do is pretty complex, even in the earlier grades. One of the differences this time around is that students have to answer questions correctly and then explain how they got the answer. So, in many of the questions, it's a little bit different. Results for the next-generation MCAS are geared to reflect readiness for the next grade. And if you've got your parent reports and looked at that, there was a pretty clear explanation on, on that, or college or career if kids are in next grade. They are specifically designed to be computer-based. And in the spring of 17, four and eight took them. This spring, fourth, fifth, seventh and eighth will take them computer-based. And in the spring of 19, third through 10th, the whole district will be computer-based. This spring, 2018, we actually have some trials at Compalets High School in math and ELA. We don't have too much information yet, but we just know that there will be some.
Good news, I think we're in a much better position to shorten the testing window as a result of some of the Chromebook investments that we've made, so that's a good thing, so less, less testing time means obviously more-
They're thinking they can probably test two grades at one time in elementary and middle both issues.
So that's great.
Thank you for the, you know, technology infusion, that'd be really helpful. You have already seen this, this is kind of the old versus the new scoring section. So exceeding, meeting, and partially meeting and not meeting are the new that you'll mostly be looking at. So we've heard it a lot the time, can't compare the old results to the new results and we have not been doing that. And neither why, that the new standards for meeting expectations are more rigorous than the standards for reaching the proficient level, so you can't compare the old category to the new category that kind of lines up. It wouldn't be like apples to oranges. Our new standards help predict student readiness for the next grade level. This year is the baseline year for a new test of three through eight, so the assessment will become the basis for comparison in the future. In 20 years, we'll be saying, okay, this one's no good anymore, we'll be using another one, but that's, these are, we're building the base here right now. Expectations are that the results will rise over time, that happens with any assessment students take over and over again, even if the questions are different, they know the format, they learn the computer. So I think you'll see that in our trend lines for the old MCAS, as students progress through the grades, their scores go up and that's the expectation with this one as well, kind of having students rise to the occasion. And the new standards address more challenging skills such as critical thinking, we already talked about that, problem solving. So we get accountability levels every year and they're not going to change, at least for this year and potentially not next year as the legacy gets brought in. The only way it would change is if we had, you know, less than a certain percent attendance for MCAS and that's never happened in this district, so I expect that these will remain the accounta- accountables for, you know, at least a year or two. Stephanie's favorite, growth percentiles, this is a way that we look at students' growth on assessments. They're compared with their like peers, peers who took the same assessments they did, scored similarly from similar type districts. So we can tell whether they're growing along with their peers, things like that. And typical growth is in the 40th to 60th percentile, we want it on the upper end, but.
Sue, can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
Are you saying that we can compare last year's growth percentiles to this year's?
So the state did put growth percentiles out, yep, for district and school levels, yep. You probably didn't get them on a parent report, but.
But it would be fairly apples to apples in comparing last year's test to this year's test, or will they be somewhat?
So they're comparing how students performed on last year's test
Yeah.
to, and they're, and tho- those students to how the students per, the similar students on this test. So it's not apples to apples, it's kind of more like student to student, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So they had some way of.
They're not comparing the test, they're comparing the students, I guess is what you're saying.
Right, some way of equating the performance on the old MCAS with performance on the new MCAS and you'd need, you'd need a degree in statistics.
Well, there's something strange about it this year, and I was talking to Sue and I don't know the answer, I haven't looked into it, because parents, we, we typically get the growth percentiles on the, the forms that come home and this year we didn't. And so I was actually surprised when Sue sent these, I was like, oh, I thought that they were getting rid of it altogether. So I don't know the reasoning behind it and, and what went into calculating them and if they did something different that they, than they've done in the, in the past, so.
So we have, we can get their student percentiles.
Yeah.
This morning, but.
It's, it's just different this year, I don't know.
So we got them at the school level, but you didn't receive them at the, at the parent level?
Right.
Right.
I didn't know if it was just for certain grades, but I didn't see it. And then Sue looked at an example and it didn't show them either, so.
So if parents were interested in finding out their students' growth percentile, would they be able to access that in, you know, in some way, shape or form?
And they'd have to call the school, call the guidance counselor to help with that?
Yeah.
And I, I think it's worth looking into why they didn't send them home, I, I think there's a reason and I'm, I'm, my guess is something different went into how they calculated them.
It's probably statistically valid at the cohort level, but maybe not at the individual student level.
There's something to it, I think.
That would be.
Thank you. So when we look at growth percentiles, some of the questions that we ask are, you know, are students growing adequately toward meeting the state standards? Are they growing more in one area than the other, is math higher than ELA or is it, is it vice versa? How do our students compare with other districts of similar demographic? How does the growth of students in our schools compare to other similar schools? Are they, are students in different grade levels within one school growing similar, similarly? I've been pulling that kind of data apart. So this is Russ's favorite, over time, this is a percentage of advanced proficient in, through the grades, I don't want to go through, I, I have these in your packet, right, so I don't want to belabor too much. But you can see our trend continues to be relatively even. The, in 2017 though, you'll have to note that the new scoring mechanism is meeting or exceeding. So you can't compare the 2016, 76, the 2017, 67, that's what we cannot compare, those are the numbers we can't compare. So now we're starting a new foundation with our 67 and our 69 there in math. In general, the newer scores, the, the new scoring mechanism, students score lower, you'll see lower scores across the district, across the state. Which was the.
With the, with the distribu- overall, the distribution that was seen at the state level was about 50% of students in the meeting or exceeding categories. So you'll see that in every case, I believe, we're well above that.
We're well above the state.
50% threshold.
For sure. Which was nice to see, and we're, we're very close to, you know, in, almost to last year's scores too, even though we're not supposed to compare. But here's fourth grade. Sorry, it's taking, we have a lag.
At least it's working.
Do you have any questions as we go through, please? I popped science in there because I didn't give it enough attention, packet that I gave you. These are, this is the old, the, the legacy MCAS, so our science scores, you want the two blocks on the left to be higher than, the two blocks on the right to be lower really, but you can see over time we are pretty, pretty, pretty even.
So the, the dark purple is the highest category?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Advanced, proficient, needs improvement, warning for this one. Sorry. I just put them in right before I came in here. This is how we compared to the state in elementary math and elementary ELA. So you want the two top segments to be bigger than the, the state ones and the two bottom to be smaller. So you can see in every instance. We get fifth grade ELAs.
Yeah, fifth, yeah, fifth grade ELA and fifth grade math, you know, that's where you start to see the, the distance being put between our students and the rest of the state.
So the elementary principals weighed in on some areas that they'd like to focus in on, both strength and improvement. 66% meeting or exceeding across all grades in all subject areas, higher, well, well above the state averages. Very few fifth grade students scored in the warning or not meeting categories in all grades. 4% or less of all students scored in the not meeting or warning categories across all grades. And sci and tech engineering scores increased somewhat. And then for improvement, fourth grade ELA students scored better on multiple choice and need to improve on written responses. High needs groups in general across the board continue to score below that of their typical peers and they need to work on synthesizing information, making inferences and writing good texts.
Sue, can I just ask a question on the ELA, is that done on the computer, the fourth grade ELA, written?
Let's see, we did, I think next year it is, right?
Okay, so it wasn't this past year? You know, that was an area that they talked about at the conference of concern, right?
Four and, five and eight, four and seven, I gotta get the progression in my head, five and eight, four and seven, yep.
Hopefully they fix it, but, you know, I, I know they talked about how students were unable to see their whole essay. You know, they could only see, let's say, 10 lines back of what they'd written and it was like a long open response question and they were only able to, so I mean editing work and everything from there. I think it was that actually, the delegate meeting that was brought up as a concern, but if they don't change it.
And looking at multiple texts at the same time on a, I mean, we're not used to it.
Right, right, no, I, I.
So the math, I mean, the, sorry, elementary principals are dedicated to this mathematics PD that I continue to talk about. Mike Flynn, he had an article, I should send that out to everybody, that was really interesting in one of the publications, I can do that. The math specialists in the elementary buildings are providing in-class coaching where possible. That's possible at Center and Will Swamp more so than Blueberry because Center and Will Swamp have tutors and, and Center actually has two math specialists, so one of them can act in a more coaching capacity. And that's because of Title I funding and Blueberry is looking for some potential help in that area. It's so teachers will engage, actually they have engaged, in a full day PD on, in ELA and two half-days of readers writers workshop lesson study. The ELA coaches provide consistent ongoing coaching and modeling in classes. We have phos-science PD slated for the spring and introduction of level text for phos-science to enhance the cross-curriculum learning. Just some other things that we put in place.
One of the things that, that we witnessed on the PD day when the elementary grade level teams were together is they were really aggressively looking for opportunities to integrate social studies and science in, in that readers and writers workshop model and so that's a way of addressing the breadth of the standards in an integrated way and I think it'll.
So we were able to purchase a bunch of leveled readers in science to go along with the phos-science, but also go along with the leveled reading in, in ELA, which is really helpful. And all three schools were able to get one, so. Here's sixth grade. Here is one area that we actually scored higher this year than we did last in, in seventh grade math. So we had a great score there. I think the state did well is also in that area, but seventh grade math, 72% of students met or exceeded the standards. Here's eighth grade, and the little box on the bottom is for Russ. We had a, a kind of an anomaly last year that, you know, it's worth a look. So last year we had a 13, a 13 SGP, a growth, a growth percentile, we were really concerned about it. The admin team poured some resources into that particular area and this year they came up to a 38 point. So then they're still working on it, but they did make some nice gains there.
Sue, were you able to compare the, the cohort to see what their student, would that be at all comparable? So that grade, um, the cohort that had the low, that had the 13.
So they would have been in ninth grade and they don't get anything?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so ninth grade locks out, right?
So we won't see.
Yes.
Next year.
Got it, yeah, thank you.
Actually, just to.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, just to piggyback on that thought because you're not really going to be looking at ninth grade, the current ninth graders testing in any capacity, but we do see their data here in eighth grade. Maybe as a suggestion, and I don't know if this is coming in the spring, but I would love to see a PD devoted to bringing in the current ninth grade students with the math team, just like it was done in the ELA format. Because I would love to see with the discrepancy in scores, how are those kids acclimating to high school math? And maybe get some good feedback from the teachers, how much are they having to reteach or how much are they having to, you know, extend their, I want to say from September to however long they do have a review of concepts? How long are they having to extend that based on what these, this current eighth grade testing group, which are our current freshmen in high school? Given that we can't test them in any capacity, I would really like to see some type of PD done like that.
Yeah, so what Beth's referring to, we, the high school, middle school ELA teachers heard from ninth grade Long Meadow High students on our professional development day, it was a cool opportunity for them to hear the voices of the students in terms of what their experience was like transitioning to high school. So if we could replicate that in math, I think if we find the opportunity. We'll say that Meredith Loughlin is the chair of the LHS Math Department. She, she is, is really committed to kind of smoothing that transition from eighth to ninth grade. If, if there are any gaps in a, in a kid's experience, she wants to use the entire experience of a kid in high school to address those gaps so that if, you know, if they're coming out of middle school with some algebra gaps, you know, can you even, can you even introduce it in the geometry class? Can you bring in, can you address some of those algebra standards in, in geometry to make sure the kids are ready for Algebra II and, and upper level math classes, so. So we recognize that kids come to the high school with a lot of different experiences. Sometimes they're well-equipped and sometimes there's some gaps in their experience. So Meredith, to her credit, is really committed to kind of figuring that situation out, understanding the experience of those kids as they make it to the, to the high school. But I, I think we will be interested to see the performance of that cohort as it makes its way through, you know, the 10th grade test.
Exactly. Took some action on that cohort, so it wasn't like we're just waiting to see how they're doing.
Right, we've been having these kind of conversations with admin team for a while with Tom Landers about math in particular and getting them better calibrated and ready to come up, so.
Those students were.
He's like, totally reported that students aren't much more prepared for ninth grade now.
I think, I think that was great, that you recognized that cohort and that you added support to their experience. Russ?
My point on this though is the cohort isn't the students.
Right.
Eighth grade math has been weak for years, so it's, that's, that's my issue is, it's not let's follow those students, it's let's follow that, that subject at that grade level. Because the prior grade, seventh grade and 10th grade always have consistent scores in the years before and after. That grade, there's a big dip, and there has been since I've been on the committee, so, not that, you know, two or three years now, so.
I'm sure you're concerned.
And I would just add, all the more important to do that, the following of math because they are in seventh and eighth grade, they're kind of put on tracks for math, more so than English. So I think it's definitely important to watch that bridge and have those discussions.
Those decisions for, where your maths, you know, going for maths schedule-wise are mainly early on in middle school, so.
Right.
I should say, I'm glad that it is going in the right direction.
Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think all that data comes largely from what's going on within the schools. So the eighth, eighth graders going to ninth grade math and, and all those teachers get the data. When you look at the 10th grade math, I just worry, everybody does, I mean, I don't mean everybody, but when you look at 10th grade miraculously, the majority are all of a sudden doing well and they'll say, oh, everybody caught up. I just, every year I just say this, they did not all catch up, the grade, the, the test is just a different test at 10th grade. So I think the, the quality of data that you're going to get and the concerns that you raise are going to be collected from the teachers teaching those courses and seeing the kids come through and who's struggling. And when you have a cohort that's struggling, they, they should be picking it up there. But not looking to MCAS to, to grab that data for you.
Maybe with the legacy giving, giving all the way through, or the next generation, that, that may change, but right now we know what we're trying to be.
I would totally agree with 10th, but it's the same thing the years prior too, it's just that one grade that goes down every year.
On the MCAS though, is what you're talking about?
MCAS math only, not ELA.
So critical, math in eighth grade for that transition.
But are you using MCAS to judge, solely to judge the performance and are you looking at that, you know, contextually across the state in different districts as well as the growth of the student? And then are you looking at their performance in ninth grade in math? Is the MCAS truly an indicator of, of their performance or is it that dip more of a reflection of the test itself? You know?
The eighth grade, from what I understand, I think fourth grade is one of the grades when it usually goes down across the state. Eighth grade is not your typical year, and it didn't in the ELA. And it never does, it's just math. And which I think administration's working on, I'm sure the teachers are working on it, but I don't, I wouldn't use MCAS for anything other than sometimes it's just a clear.
It's a flag, Adam, yeah.
Yeah, you could look at trends over time and see. So science and tech engineering, every grade. Advanced, proficient, needs improvement and warning from left to right. Nice course in science. State comparisons then, math on the left, ELA on the right. They want to be higher, or we want to have a wider bar on the top two in the state and a shorter bar on the bottom two in the state. You want to look at eighth grade math there, not quite even, but we would like the gap to be bigger.
It's not as big a gap.
Yeah. Look at eighth grade ELA.
Definitely, definitely going in the right direction.
Yeah. The middle school principals want to let you know that sixth through eighth grades perform well in ELA. Seventh grade performed very well in math in both growth and achievement scores. And they are continuing to look at the eighth grade math scores. Students scored lower on expressions and equations in math questions. And high needs students didn't score as well as their typical, typical fellow parts, which we are continuously looking at. Strategies for improvement in the middle school are to continue the interdisciplinary work, promote reading and writing across all subjects. PD and inclusive practices for all students, as fact, I think, team was at a PD this morning on that. Co-teaching with the math and lit lab and special education teachers as part of trying to be more inclusive with those students. Increase tasks that require critical thinking and reasoning and just to utilize our new universal screener to target instruction to students who need it. And just to utilize our new universal screener to target instruction to students who need it. How about this 10th grade, ELA? A hundred percent of students were advanced or proficient. That's crazy. The high school just, you know, they're amazing. High school versus the state. Here's high school biology scores. Twenty seventeen took a nice rise in achievement. Here's the comparison from science to the state. Eighth grade is particularly impressive, and then 10th as well. So we're watching those science scores in this area with the new Phos at elementary. See how that might impact our scores. The high school wants you to know that they far outperformed the state in science and technology engineering. That a hundred percent of the students are in the advanced or proficient category in ELA. And that ninety-four percent of students scored in the advanced or proficient category in math. So they're on the old test still, nine. Again, our high-needs students perform below their peers in some subgroups there. Students had some difficulty identifying main ideas and themes when synthesizing passages in ELA. You see a theme with that synthesizing of information. Continuous improvement at the high school. Emphasize close reading and literary analysis. Engage students in looking at the big picture. Provide opportunities for critical thinking and reasoning. Provide students with opportunities to connect school lessons with real-life experiences. That's huge. They'll start to prepare for the next-gen MCAS by identifying the skills and standards assessed and embed them into the math in ELA classrooms. And they'll do computer-based field testing this spring in ELA and math. To what extent, I don't know, but I'll keep you posted on that. Then, students in five, eight, and 10 this year were given an option to participate in a school climate survey. And the survey focused on engagement, safety, and environment, three distinct areas. It was pretty interesting to look at the results. The survey consisted of seventy-one items over three grades with seven items common to all the grades. So only seven kind of items crossed all three categories, but... And then the data was suppressed if fewer than 10 students responded. So it was optional, they didn't have to do it. If the reliability level was less than .7 on the one-point scale, or if all students responded the same on an item, they tossed that answer out, too. So if everybody said, you know, excellent, you know, the whole, the whole fifth grade, they tossed it out.
So could I mention this? So this is, I think, an exciting development, really. So when the Elementary and Secondary Education Act was reauthorized at the federal level, they asked states to consider some non-academic indicators of school and district success. And so that's where some of this climate surveying has come from. And so, you know, we could argue whether or not it should or shouldn't belong as part of the MCAS test, but it is what it is for now. And I think once this, once this settles in and the dust settles, I think this is going to be, provide us with some really valuable information for school improvement planning and district improvement planning. Even when I was talking to individual committee members, I think probably three or four of you mentioned the importance of surveying and understanding what the needs of our students are and what our parents are interested in. So this, this won't give us everything we need, but, but these climate surveys, I'm excited about it. I don't want to get too deep in it this year, because it's, it's new information and we don't really have benchmarks or baselines. But I'm excited that the state, I don't get too excited very often about directions that the state goes in, but this is an area that I'm really pleased to see.
They're taking a hard look at it and recalibrating a lot of questions. So they really want you to take their results with a grain of salt this year, but take them, you know, and use them how you will.
So where does it stand for next year, then? Is it optional still? Is it...
I'm not sure. Yeah, I think we'd have to find that out for you. I'm guessing it, perhaps it will always be optional for students to participate. It may not be something that we can, can or should compel, but...
And Shelley Warren's gonna take her climate survey data and look at the state to see if they're kind of in line with each other. So she has not a chance to do that yet, but that's something she's working on. So it's the typical bell curve. You get an index between one and a hundred, and, you know, with a mean of fifty and a standard deviation of twenty from high school, for college statistics. So you want somewhere between that forty and sixty for your, for your school, to be in the average range. And that is... You can see if you got sixty-three to a hundred points on your climate, then you were in the top twelve percent of schools. We were not, we were actually in the average, the seventy-five percent of schools. But they were very similar kind of indicators. The most important one, I think, that we're hearing is a theme throughout every, every kind of wellness piece and is the students that have a stay-in-school rule and then report a strong sense of belonging. So I think that sense of belonging is so important for students across the board. It makes them feel empowered, and they have a place to go, and a group to identify with. And I think when students have that, they are, they have a leg up on everything else they can get. So our results overall, we couldn't score in some areas because we didn't meet the criteria for getting a score. And the state couldn't tell us why. I asked, you know, did we get kicked out because we scored the same on everyone? You know, did our confidence level not meet? And she, she couldn't tell us why we didn't get scores. But overall, our overall climate.
So it kind of goes the opposite way of MCAS. They're a little happier.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, it's happy news, yes. Yep.
They're doing better, but they're not happy.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else to give it to. I mean, they should do it before they take the MCAS, not after the MCAS, right? I'm not sure where in, I'm not sure where in the testing it came, you know?
Yep.
It's true.
So...
Little kids, little problems, big kids, big problems. Kind of like follows that.
That's true.
Alrighty. Any questions?
Thank you, Sue.
Can I just ask you one quick question?
Sure.
Just about the high-needs students. Is there any data to show how they compare to other districts with similar populations? As far as growth and how our high-needs students are performing?
Ours always outperform the state. And generally, you know, we find, our similar districts are about the same. So every year we get, that comes out probably December, maybe? Like, we get a list of like districts to compare ourselves to. We don't have that yet.
And do we, can we pull growth data from just our high-needs students to see how they...
Yes, you can. And high-needs is made up of ELL students, special needs students, academically disadvantaged students. It's a, it's a group of students, and you can pull those groups apart, even, you know, to even smaller subgroups to look at that kind of data, which we do.
Okay.
That was, that was an indicator. And one of my, one of my goals was to make sure that we're disaggregating that information and taking a look at the performance of all children and making sure that we're seeing the growth of all those subgroups.
So just two quick questions. One is, well, I sent you that email. So when we get that information, I know Principal Landers always kind of compares the high school and then our cohort and then a couple of the area schools. Could we do that for just all the way from start to finish? We're missing, Wolf Swamp didn't come out the same way in this packet, the data for some reason.
Oh, really?
That's true, I never saw it.
But I think when they present, it'll probably...
Yeah, well, I don't know if they're gonna, their plan is to come and answer any questions that you might have. So I'm not sure they're gonna do a big presentation on individual schools. I think that's what we gotta agree on.
When they come in, by then, will we have the cohort data?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not.
I mean, if the state identifies a cohort that we're similar to socio-economically and demographically, we could, but all the state data's out there. If you wanted to know how we stacked up against particular districts, we could pull that pretty easily. So if you said, how do we compare to districts X, Y, Z, we can, we can do that for you. And if there are specific school-based questions that you have relative to the data, we can pass those along to the principals, and they can weave it into their school improvement plan presentation somehow, some way on the 29th. Is that, answer your question?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think I'll have any questions from the principals, based on what you presented. I think it's more, usually we did a comparison versus the cohort, just to make sure that we're still, you know, where we were.
We usually do it like a little bit after the fact, because they don't come until after.
So that's fine.
Pretty far after.
We could do that later.
Yeah, sure.
So the only other question I have is, when we see, or when, because you get the data based on, you know, building-based, and then you can see teacher-based and team-based.
You can build them.
So if you see data that shows, you know, the scores look different in one particular class, either really above or really below, how are you addressing that? I mean, are we using, you know, teachers that really have fantastic scores every year? Do we kind of try to model them, or do we? And what do we do with the team or teachers that are maybe not doing as well?
Well, so the first thing I do is pick up the phone and call the principal and say, hey, did you notice? And they've always noticed before I have, because we get their, their data, and they're, they're looking at it. They're looking at the raw data, and, you know, so they, they know that. And then, you know, it's really, you have to look at what the data is saying. Is it one classroom? Is it a classroom across the board? And depending on, you know, what the results are, how do you remediate that? I think that, you know, good professional development is, I keep saying it, embedded, ongoing over time. We have that with the ELA, the Lit coaches at elementary. And you'll see that, you know, I think students are really gonna do well on that synthesizing of information that they're being asked to do. And we're moving towards that with math, I think, in ELA. So I think the more that we do of that, yeah. But if someone's, you know, a rock star, we really typically ask them, so can we, you know, can we visit your classroom? Can we have this to, this teacher come visit your classroom? They do it a lot at the high school.
Yeah, they'll deploy the math specialists, the coaches into classrooms if they're seeing, you know, structural problems, or if they're seeing soft spots in the data. They'll, you know, they're, they're good about getting after that.
It's kind of why we blocked, might fly in really for math overall, just that we saw the trend in math changing, and we really were trying to grow really excited math students, the way they get excited about reading in ELA. And so we kind of attack it from that angle. But I think it's a different fix for different situations.
Any other questions or comments for Sue on the MCAS report? Or, or Sue or Marty? Okay. So seeing none, we will move on. I think the one thing I wanted to go back to was, I think we interrupted what process we were gonna take on the agenda for the document that Jess created. Did we, did we finish the discussion on what we were gonna do from this meeting in order to take some sort of action on Jess's document, possibly being a vision statement for the school committee? We had discussion, and I had to cut it short.
Well, we were gonna do the second motion, correct? Or so is that something else? Perhaps?
We were debating and discussing how to get input, keeping in mind our open-meeting law, to, you know, move forward on refining that document so that it reflects what we would like to see in a vision statement, or whatever we want to do with that document. I interrupted the conversation, so we could move on to other agenda items. I am suggesting, if you're open to it, trying to work that out with Marty and Diane, just the details of how we should accomplish this, keeping in mind our open-meeting law. Does anyone object to me trying to do that on my own? You object, Russ?
Yeah, I hate, no. I think that's a good idea. But my quick comment would be everywhere where she says advocate, support, that's kind of vision-type statements. And then our specific goals that we have in our goals, those should come out. And I think if you did that, that alone would probably, because most of it is, you know, it is the vision, advocate, support, examine. But things like Metco, very specific things, should probably come out, because this is more of a general document, if we're, if we're doing it that way.
So are you saying to keep out the objectives, to eliminate the objectives?
No, the objectives are, are good. Like, we should monitor and evaluate academic areas of strength, advocate for funding, support the administration. But when you get down to, you know, some of the more specific things, which we have in our goals, like Metco, school choice, the later start time of the high school, you know, those are things that aren't part of a vision, really. So those should be in our goals. And then the rest of this document, probably two-thirds of it is really vision.
Okay, and I, and just to clarify, I'm not volunteering to fine-tune this document. I'm volunteering to develop a process for us to give feedback related to the document.
Oh.
Sue?
I thought we were just gonna...
No, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the process for you. I am not volunteering to fine-tune it.
I can talk now, because Paul's not here telling me to be quiet. I was thinking, as you guys were going over that priority list, that if you had applied the guiding principles that Stephanie had on her, you know, her list and column guiding principles, it would have been much easier to prioritize that list. You know, is it student safety for, you know, all the things that you said? Then you could have got everything, every decision that you make, you think about, how does that line up with our guiding principles or our vision statement, however? And I think it might make other work for you more easy.
Yeah, I, I...
You know, whether it's a $5 million item or a $5 item, your principles are your principles. Like, Stephanie's not here, but you know, she...
And I, and I love that. So I want to figure out how we can make this document, you know, approved by the committee and everything. And I think all I was suggesting, instead of, or we can come up with a process now, but in the concept, you know, in keeping in mind how much time we have already been here and what we have left. Would you be okay with me just deter, coming up with the process that we're gonna do that on my own? Okay? Thank you. So we can move on to the next agenda item that we have. And if anyone needs to go, please do. Still have a board? We still have, so the task force that we talked about at the Select Board joint meeting, at our joint meeting with the Select Board. I haven't yet had the joint meeting, joint administrative meeting, where we had said we'd try to look out the details of that board. But I did notice that a lot of the discussion that we had and all of our input is in the minutes from that meeting. So is there anyone that objects to me just basically bullet-pointing what we had mentioned during that meeting and bringing that to the Select Board as, you know, feedback for what the task force should involve? Or if not, do you have any feedback for me now?
Just, I would recommend that you touch base with Marie Angelides. She has some ideas, too. And if you could just connect with her, that would be great.
Okay. The other idea I had would be to just, you know, to, to charge the task force with coming up with the objective and the goals. Because, you know, if it was formed and it was, you know, an effective group of people, they could determine what the strategy would be, what the best strategy would be of the task force.
Yeah, definitely, definitely talk to her.
Okay. Russ?
I liked your idea, though. I think if, if you give her the bulleted highlights of what we talked about, that's fine.
Okay. Moving on, we have an executive session. And we need a motion to move into executive session. Do you want to make that motion for us?
I move adjourn to executive session. Are we returning or not?
You're not.
Not to return into open session.
Could you read the whole, there's a motion...
Oh, there is? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies that relates to collective bargaining with Unit A to consider the release of executive session minutes from previous meeting. According to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22G, not to reconvene and to open session.
Second. All those in favor? We need a roll call vote.
Oh, Jess Hutchins, aye.
Naomi Ross, tea, aye. Michelle Bradsky, aye.
Russell Dupree, aye.
Beth Barron, aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.